Everybody here? Alright, it's six o'clock. Good evening, everyone. I would like to open the regular city council meeting. Today is Tuesday, August 4, 2020 at 6:00 PM. Due to the COVID-19 pandemic emergency, we have to do our city council meeting much different than we usually do. For the safety of our states and the safety of the public. Now, I would like to ask our city manager, give us a brief explanation on this.
Thank you, and good evening. This meeting of the Galt City Council is being conducted by teleconference video conference in compliance with the state and county stay-at-home health orders and as allowed by the governor's executive order N-29-20, which allows for a deviation of the teleconference rules required by the Brown Act. Members of the public will see council members and city staff who are appearing by way of remote video or telephone connections. City council meetings will only be held by teleconference or video conference until further notice. Today's agenda states that rather than attending in person, residents may submit written public comments via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org. That's P-U-B-C-O-M@cityofgalt.org prior to the council meeting. Any written comments that were received will be read out loud during the city council meeting by the city clerk on the appropriate agenda item subject to the customary five-minute time limit. We will try to check the email for additional public comments during the meeting if feasible. We are also using a new webinar format that allows the public to provide live public comment using the Zoom webinar feature. Members of the public may use the link to enter the webinar as attendees. They should be able to use the raise their hand option on the Zoom webinar to let us know if they would like to speak and should do so when the mayor announces the time for general public comment. We request, as we do at typical in-person council meetings, that speakers provide their name and address when they are called on to speak and their line is unmuted. Attendees should also see a lower-hand feature if they change their mind and do not want to speak. If you do not see these features in the Zoom module you are using, it may be that the software, that your software is not up to date or because of another technical issue on the user's end. There will be an opportunity after the staff report for the public to provide public comment on special, on meeting agenda items as well. Again, attendees via Zoom webinar will need to raise their hand at those times as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Tina, may I have a rule call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Councilmember Campion.
Here.
Councilmember Lamson.
Here.
Mayor Sandu.
Here.
Please rise for the silent prayer and flag sleeve. Flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Tina, please read the replay. That statement, please.
The meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T Uverse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 7th at 9:00 AM and Saturday, August 8th at 9:00 AM. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Next-gen item, so any approval, addition or deletion? If it's not, then next-gen item is a presentation. We have a two presentation. One presentation is Public Safety Committee Annual Report to the City Council. Chief Stockman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I am, this is our annual public safety presentation to cover fiscal year 1920. And Lieutenant Kalanowski is present. He will be doing the presentation for the Chair of the Public Safety Committee and for the present party.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council members. I'm here tonight to present the 2019-2020 Public Safety Committee Annual Report. During the year, we had three out of six scheduled meetings occur, and those were in July, September, January. And then there were three remaining meetings. One was canceled due to lack of agenda items around the holidays. And unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the last two meetings of 1920 were canceled. However, starting in July, we resumed those public safety committee meetings via Zoom like we are tonight. As many of you know, the purpose and the function of the Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the city council and evaluate any public safety issues within the community brought to the committee's attention by the city council, city staff, or residents, and then ultimately make recommendations to the city council. The committee consists of seven members of the community. Two of them are council members currently, Mayor Sandu and Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Farmer serves as the Chair, the Vice Chair being Randy Shelton. In addition, we have Darren Mitchell, Chris, Chris Shamber, Jer Shamber, Teresa McCord, and Richard Tellier also on the committee. Other participants which are non-voting members include the Chief of Police or Designee, Public Works Director Designee, the Fire Department, Parks and Recs as needed, and then our Staff Liaison. Many of the items discussed this year were surrounding traffic issues. The, our annual report, which I'm presenting tonight, our emergency operations plan, and other community events that occurred prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that would conclude this year's presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Kalanowski, first of all, thank you for, you know, bringing that report to us. And I know the last couple of meeting we cannot do to COVID-19. I think last meeting we did. And hopefully, you know, in the future, if the situation will not change, we should be doing better. Thank you for everybody on the safety committee meeting, or safety committee members. They made a lot of time, you know, working with me. Thank you. Other council member? Any comment? Good, Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here real quick. I just want to thank the members for their participation. I was able to attend, I think, one of the meetings in, in this year. And certainly, the last meeting that was, that, that, that they had via Zoom. And, and so I think it's a good, a good group, a good, a good group of people who, who want to bring stuff forward for consideration to improve our community. So, thank you to the, my colleagues that serve on the committee, and thank you to all of our committee members that are participating.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comment? Alright, we're gonna move along. The next presentation is proclamation for Doris Louise. Mr. Hagland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. This is a proclamation that was requested by the Galt Area Historical Society in recognition of Doris Louise Dowdell, who has been a longtime member of the community. She's about to turn 103. And the, what was one of the charter members founding the Galt Area Historical Society itself. And so, based on information provided to us by the Historical Society, we worked up a proclamation for council's consideration. And I'll just quickly read it here for our listeners at home. Whereas Doris Louise Dowdell was born on August 15th, 1918, in the Galt area. Whereas Louise and her brother Carl attended grammar school for a time at the Brown School before it became the Alabama School. And Louise ultimately graduated from Galt High in 1937. Whereas Louise was the first queen of the Galt County Fair and rode her horse in the Galt Parade. And whereas, as a young girl, Louise worked at the Giant Orange Stand next to what is now Kane Garage off Simmerhorn Road. And whereas, as an adult, Louise worked at the early Galt Post Office for many years when it was located on C Street. And whereas Louise was a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, a charter member of the Galt Area Historical Society, and served as the first Historical Society President, a position she would hold on six separate occasions. And whereas Louise was responsible for naming the Galt Area Historical Society Annual Car Show as a trip down, or a drive down memory lane. And whereas, it was Louise who conceived of and started the preservation of old photos of Galt and the surrounding area towns as a means of preserving that pictorial history for posterity. And whereas it was Louise Dowdell who formulated the committees to establish a local museum, which eventually became the Ray House Museum, and spearheaded the coordination of the history of all the local area schools and information about local Native American history. Now therefore, be it known that the city of, the city council of the city of Galt does hereby proclaim August 15th, 2020 as Louise Dowdell Day in and through the entirety of the city of Galt in recognition of the lifelong efforts of Louise Dowdell to discover and preserve the history of Galt. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the council consider approval of that proclamation.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Hagland, to bring this proclamation in front of the council. I'm happy to support this proclamation because it's a very long, long-term of Galt residents and also helping all the communities service a long time. And I will, let's talk about the other council member. Any other council member wants to make the comment or? Good, Sean Farmer.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, just like to say, you know, happy birthday. It's quite a feat to, to live, you know, over 100 years. And as some of us, or most of us, I think, are members of the Historical Society, we know, you know, that it's an important organization in Galt, and she's been such an impact to that organization. And she's going to really leave an important legacy behind with all that she's done. So, happy birthday and look forward to the little parade by where her residence is on the birthday day. More information about that, somebody can contact the Galt Historical Society for more information about that. So, happy birthday, Louise.
Other council member, when it is your head. Good council member Lamson.
Just want to say happy birthday to Louise. And I hope she will enjoy the little, that's your drive-by parade, and everyone will be out for her. And there, I believe there is information posted on the Historical Society's Facebook page. But what a feat, and congratulations. And she was very active here in Galt and an honor to wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, happy birthday to Louise. That is, you know, certainly her accomplishments here in the area are well documented and totally appreciate everything she's done and will continue to do. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make the parade. I will be out of town that day. But I wish her the best and, and I'm sure it will be quite an event for her.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion.
Yes. The, I've known Louise for a number of years, you know, mainly through the Historical Society. And it amazes me, she is always there. She's always on top of what is going on. And not only has served as president, but she has served as secretary a number of positions and, and, and a real lightning rod to that organization for the community. And I wish her the best and may more birthdays.
Thank you. Again, happy birthday to Louise in coming days. Thank you. So, Mr. Hagland is, is, I think everybody's supporting, so we don't need to any vote or anything, right?
Well, I think that with a, just a quick roll call vote of the council, it becomes an official proclamation and then we can have circulated for council signature.
Tina, may I have a rule call, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Campion.
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson.
Hi.
Mayor Sandu.
Hi. Motion passed with 5 to 0. Right, next agenda item is public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954, 54.3, members of the public may address the city council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the city council to receive comments, except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and special distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS semi-colon forward slash forward slash US02web.zoom.us/j/89742253516. Webinar ID 89742253516. We do have one public comment written in. This is from Faith and Tom Harper. Attention, Galt City Council. Almost exactly one year ago, state grants providing road diets and roundabouts were offered to the Planning Commission. The public was invited and my husband and I attended along with neighbors and/or other concerned citizens. Based on the presentation regarding future traffic plans for Corillian, we believe the city council should reject the proposed road diet and roundabouts. The basic plan proposes that 11 roundabouts be built and that the traffic lanes be reduced to one lane in each direction. The primary reasons given were to reduce traffic speed, improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, and to reduce pollution. It appeared that no serious thought was given to introducing stop signs or simply reducing the speed through the use of speed limit signs. It also appears that free money from the state to facilitate the changes was in play. Driving through Galt is striking that Corillian is currently one of the best-planned and developed thoroughfares in Galt. The traffic lanes are sufficiently wide to accommodate traffic. There are two lanes in each direction with a center median for most of it. There are bike lanes and developed pedestrian walkways on both sides of the street with mature landscaping. The roadway is separated from houses by sound walls, providing an additional level of safety for children living in the neighborhood. It is easily one of the best streets in Galt and it's hard to understand why it has been chosen for potential redevelopment that will almost certainly make traffic flow worse while providing little or no improvement to pedestrian safety and only a minor improvement to bicycle safety. Could it be that road diets and roundabouts are the new plan de jour? One could almost understand the desire to put in perhaps as many as four roundabouts at key intersections. However, 11 roundabouts in the area in question seems excessive and primarily aimed at making the project more expensive instead of improving safety. It should be noted that since the 2019 planning meeting, the city of Lowdi rejected a very similar plan presented by the same company that is proposing the redevelopment of Corillian to the city of Galt. Also, during the 2019 meeting, the issue of further development that could feed into Corillian was briefly discussed but not expounded upon. Based on the current development plan, the importance of Corillian as a thoroughfare for potential new development traffic can't be dismissed. And a road diet reducing to one lane in each direction will only hinder the free flow of traffic. After the 2019 meeting, I met with Mr. Farmer and discussed the proposed plan. After talking to him, I proceeded to do some research. Among the other concerns a year ago was the question about the EPA's restrictions for Galt's air quality. This seemed to be the primary motivation for roundabouts as opposed to stop signs, as stopping would be, would use more fuel. This could be a valid concern except for the lack of concern regarding drive-throughs at various fast food locations. As anyone can see by driving around Galt, most of our fast food locations have drive-throughs with long lines of cars, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. E3SparkPlugs.com states that for every two minutes a car idles, it uses the same amount of fuel it takes to go nearly a mile. Based on the number of vehicles involved and the amount of time it takes to go through a dry through, I would submit that these vehicles create much more pollution than a few stop signs. One of the selling points for this plan is that it won't cost the city anything. This plan may be funded by money set aside by the state, but during this particular time, can that money be taken away to deal with urgent problems? Also, what is the timeline for completion of these improvements? Will all be conducted all at once over a period of years or how? Does the state have a timeline that must be met? The key question regarding any construction is how, is how will current and future traffic be managed during the construction? Part of the plan of the road diet is to divert traffic to other thoroughfares because the existing road diet, the road provides excess capacity. Although it is questionable that Corillian has excess capacity after new construction is factored into the equation, Marengo Road is one of the main roads for traffic to divert to. Unfortunately, Marengo is mostly a two-lane road with some sections of four lanes that has yet to be developed into a four-lane road. How will this impact Liberty High School? Do we really expect Marengo Road to absorb the additional traffic without serious impacts? Is the cost to upgrade Marengo and any other diversionary roads included in the money provided by the state? Or is this a Galt cost Galt will have to pay? Lastly, critics of road diets generally believe they negatively affect the speed and reliability of transit service operating on the roadway. This is especially true if bus stops are or delaying buses attempting to re-enter traffic. Although this may not be a major consideration at this time, it could be important in the future as Galt continues to grow. We believe that alternatives to the road diet, i.e. number of roundabouts, mixture of stop signs and roundabouts, reduced speed limit, four-lane roundabouts, etc., were not adequately explored or given proper consideration. We also believe that as proposed, the negatives of redeveloping Corillian using the road diet or roundabout plan far exceed any potential positives. Additionally, due to their unpopularity, several citizen groups across the country have formed to reverse the implementation of road diets in their localities. For these reasons, we urge the city council to reject the proposed road diet for Corillian. And I do not have any more written public comments at this time.
Rose, anybody on a Zoom webinar?
Currently, there's no hands that are raised.
Thank you. Next-gen item is reports by city council members, original board, commission, and community. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I only have one thing real briefly. We did have a SAICOG meeting the other day. I've been appointed to a small group that's going to look at equity and inclusion as it relates to SAICOG and, and traffic planning. One of the main topics was looking at disadvantaged communities and what we can do differently in our planning to, to assist in mobility and things like that. So, to assist in mobility and things like that. So that's all I have to report on items that have happened. I do have a Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on August 10th and and then the following week, CACOG meeting that I'll report back out on. So that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Campion.
Yes, back on the 27th July, we had a meeting with the South Sacramento County Hepatocancer Conservation Committee, at which time we approved some another agreement for preservation of lands. It was a relatively quick meeting, but they are acquiring lands, a fairly significant amount of acreage for mitigation purposes, which should be of benefit to the entire county as well as those participating agencies. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had our air quality control board meeting and we received a report on the mayor's climate change commission and how we're working towards the carbon neutrality in 2025. Also, we joined with the Air Pollution Control Board in reaching out to the Speaker of the House, Nancy Pelosi, and the rest of the House to give some extra COVID funding to the Air Quality Control Board and the Pollutions Boards to help with the income loss due to COVID. And of all the regulations that they want us to implement and oversee, it's becoming impossible without the continued funding. And then the youth commission, we had our Zoom meeting last night and we had our new officers elected. And I'd like to say congratulations to Ashley Rivas, who is the new chair. And you'll have to tune in for other ones. And I'm going to work to get something posted out on the website, just trying to figure out how to get pictures of the of the new officers. Maybe I'll do a little photoshopping so we can post it and congratulate them. So and then the youth commission has a lot of worked on what they're going to want to do for the next year and what we're going to be able to do due to COVID constrictions. And but it's a very exciting year and we've got some great kids on there who really want to do some wonderful things to help our community. And we're still looking for three mentors. So if you would like to come and think you have some good advice and good plans and would be willing to help the youth work towards their goals, we would love to see some more applications. And I believe Tina, they're on the website, correct?
Yes.
Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next agenda item is information consent calendar.
Mr. Mayor, you skipped me.
Oh, sorry about that, Sean. Sean Farmer.
So I recently had a Sacramento County Public Library Authority meeting and it was a good meeting. We unfortunately had some damage to one of the libraries in Sacramento, some major damage due to water, which was resolved. But some good, some good news and some data I jotted down to report to everybody. I know there's been a lot of concern with, you know, our kids getting education and and not being in school and such. So I would like to proudly announce that in Sacramento County, we've had 271,000 digital checkouts of books in Sac County, which is 163% increase in digital checkouts over normal. And we had 15,000 curbside visits. Specifically in Galt, we had a 217% increase in curbside just in one month from June to July. So that's 217% just in one month. There was 600 users accessing digital checkouts and over 1,700 checkouts just in our Galt branch. So pretty, pretty staggering numbers. It's exciting to see that many people still, you know, anxious to get in the library. And it's been challenging for the libraries all over, especially our own, to provide services that are really important to a lot of people. So excuse me. So we look forward to, you know, hopefully getting back on track someday. But so far, the library's been really good about, you know, improvising and allowing people to still have access to all those things. So that's what I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I have nothing to report about. I will report the next SDA meeting, Transportation Meeting. So next agenda item is information consent calendar. Tina, could you read for me the consent calendar recommendation action, please?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I actually had two items to pull. And when I asked earlier, you couldn't hear me and you moved on past me.
Oh, okay. Which items are?
I just had a quick questions regarding F4 and F5.
Do you have a just question or you want to pull these items?
I want to, I want to pull both items for just brief questions.
Oh, which one is F?
F4 and F5.
So Tina, could you do these recommendation action except F4 and F5?
Yes, except the minutes as submitted, receiving file warrants for the period ending July 22nd, 2020. Adopt a resolution one authorizing the city manager to execute a task order with EKI Environment and Water, Inc. for preparation of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan update in the amount of $50,000 and two authorizing an appropriation of $50,000 for the update from Waterfund 05.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of items one through three.
All right, motion moved by Vice Mayor Lozano.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Campion.
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson.
Hi.
Mayor Sandu.
I. Motion passed by five to zero. Thank you. The item F4, Agreement with Sacramento County for South County Transit Link Sharing of Responsibility and Cost. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding it. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I just was curious. Obviously, this arrangement started in 2009 and and then we did a short term approval. This council did earlier in the year to allow for Sac County to put a new contract together. But basically, just my question was, if someone, maybe, I don't know. Chris, sorry, not Chris, Mike, if Mike or maybe Tom, if you could comment, just looking for what is the main difference? Is there any changes in the arrangement that we've had previous to now?
Yeah, sorry, Tom. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer, basically, this is just status quo agreement with the county of Sacramento. We keep the same arrangement as far as paying for 60% essentially of the South County Transit Services and the county pays for the remainder 40%. So.
Okay, I just didn't, it had some highlights, but I didn't know if those were just bullet points or if those were actually something that had changed to the previous. So that that's the only question I had regarding that item.
Right, yeah, no, other than that, it's, yeah, status quo.
Thank you, Mike.
Any council member, any other question on this F4? If he's not, I'm entertaining a motion on F4.
So moved.
Motion move by Councilmember Farmer. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Campion.
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson.
Hi.
Mayor Sandu.
Hi. Motion passed with five to zero. The item number F5, subject of provision of the Fund for Replacement of Four External Defibrillator Police Department from an increased fines and asset season. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, and I apologize if I had more time, I could have shot in a quick email to to you, Lieutenant, or to the chief about this. But I just simple question. So we're replacing four defibrillators for ones that basically have ran out their shelf life, which the mayor may not be functional in time of crisis. So it makes sense that we do that. So my only question was, what do we do with the old ones? I mean, are they just discarded? Or do we, because I, because I read that we only have four and we keep them in the supervisor's car. So obviously, the other officers don't have them. So is this something where we can, you know, take the older ones and have them available for whatever? Or we donate somewhere? I just wanted to know what happened to the old ones.
So our, actually, when we started this process, our intent was to add additional units. And then we discovered after the budget process that actually those units were beyond their shelf life. And so I, this is why that agenda item is coming before you tonight. I had the same question asked to me actually by my wife, who works for Sutter, and said, what are you doing with the old ones? We have not done any research about what we can do to surplus those items. I don't feel like it's an appropriate use for a law enforcement facility or for patrol vehicles to have the equipment beyond their shelf life available for deployment. So we need to find out if perhaps the parts or other things can be used for nonprofits or other organizations that could benefit from that. And we continue to work on funding from places like Walmart and others to add to that number of four going forward.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't have a clear, I just don't have a clear answer on disposition of those items yet.
Okay, I agree. I mean, we don't want to, you know, have something that's not going to work. But I do, they're fairly expensive, obviously, by the the cost of new ones. So I just hate to see something that's that's a lifesaving device just be discarded. Really, if we could find a use or donate that or some kind of recouping cost would be great if we could look into that.
Yes, and we will do that. We won't simply throw them out. We look at all ways to maximize the use of all our equipment.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, Lieutenant, I just have a quick comment. I would maybe make a suggestion to reach out to our local fire department to see what context they may have for, you know, ability to refurbish them at some level. Or if we have no idea how we want to effectively dispose of them, they might be a good resource.
Yes, and and they've worked with us in ensuring that we get equipment that complements what they're currently using. And so they've been in lockstep with that. So they will be one of our first stops. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member, any comment? Do we have a motion to approve F5?
So moved.
Our second.
Motion move by Councilmember Farmer, second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer.
Hi.
Councilmember Campion.
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson.
I'm sorry about that.
Mayor Sandu.
Hi. Motion passed five to zero. Thank you. Next agenda item is Schedule Matter Notice of Public Hearing. Number G1, Subject Fairway Oaks and Island Annexation Project.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah, sure. Councilmember Lamson, go ahead.
As far as unmuting, I need to recuse myself from participating in this item as I own real property, my personal residence, which is within 500 feet of the proposed annexation area and therefore close to Fairway Oaks. Based on this, I have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. While I would typically leave the room for this virtual meeting, I have been advised by the city attorney to leave the room by turning off my mic, camera, and speakers. And Mr. Hagland will notify me when the item is done and I can rejoin the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
I too also need to recuse myself from participating in this item as I own real property, my personal residence, which is within 500 feet from the proposed Fairway Oaks project and the island annexation. Based on this, I have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. I will be signing out. Because the conflict concerns my personal residence, I may opt to make a public comment as a member of the public, but will do so as a member of the public from the public attendee platform and will log off afterwards. Mr. Hagland, our city manager, will notify me when the item is done and I'll rejoin the meeting for the next item.
Thank you.
Kimberly, do you want me to leave or just turn the volume down and turn it off and then leave the room? If we leave the meeting, can we get back in? We had that problem last time, right?
Sorry, I'm muted there. So you can turn off your mic and video unless you're planning to address as a member of the public, in which case, like Councilmember Farmer, you'd want to completely log off. If you are not going to be doing that, you can shut off your camera, mic, and not participate at all so that everything is shut down.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
The council convened a closed session on three items of the negotiations during the public
Tom, could we proceed? They already offer.
Kimberly, we couldn't quite hear that. Do you think you could restate that more closer to the microphone?
Sorry, that I'm having some issues with my technology. Ignore me.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think you can proceed with the item.
On this item, I would like to at first give the opportunity to staff and then maybe a 10-minute with the applicant and then I'm going to open the public hearing. And then I will suggest all the council, then we can make a comment. But if any council member have a comment or question during, it's free to do.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Chris Arias, the city's Community Development Director. And I'm pleased to present tonight the Fairway Oaks Subdivision and Annexation Project. With me tonight is the team that worked on it. We've got Michael Fletcher. He's the project applicant representing Arcadia Development. Mike Oliver with Municipal Resource Group. He worked as the project planner for Arcadia. Cindy Ganos with Rainy Planning and Management. She's the city's contract planner, providing planning services for the project. And last but not least is Bill Forrest, the city senior development services engineer. Cindy Ganos will provide the project presentation. After she's finished, the team will be available to answer any questions you might have. However, before she starts, I just wanted to provide a little background on the project. As the project implies or the title implies, there are two components to the project. There's the development project site and the annex area, and that's represented on the map that you see on the screen. I think you'll see this also in Cindy's presentation. We kind of give you that just to give you a flavor of kind of how they work together. So there's a long history of both the annexation and a project site. And there's a long history because this area has been in a growth pattern certainly since the early 90s and probably even before then. And as early as 1992, there was a development that was brought forward. It included 124 lot subdivision and annexation of the county island. The project didn't go forward because the county island residents voted not to annex into the city and then the subdivision map expired. This project was restarted again in mid 2000 with an environmental document being completed in 2008. However, that wasn't brought forward for consideration, I do, I believe mostly because of the housing market crash at that time. But we had a project in 2012 that included 100 lot subdivision without annexation. And this project obtained unanimous approval from both the Planning Commission and City Council. And this was despite fierce opposition from people living in the county island. This project in 2012 was successful because it included Planning Commission recommendations of four access points into the subdivision. That is from Chase Drive, Ranch Road, Cornell Road, and Glendale Drive. The Planning Commission rightly believed that the four access points evenly distributed the trip generation of the project and didn't burden any single access point through the subdivision. And I would say that if you look at from an aerial view, the subdivisions that are adjacent to it, those roads were planned for eventual connection. Well, all of them except the Glendale connection. So the project applicant successfully extended the map for three years while they marketed the site to home builders. They finally exhausted all extensions. A number of home builders were interested in the site, but they weren't able to move forward. A number of home builders were interested in the site, but they weren't able to move forward. What we discovered for two primary reasons. One is they didn't have the yield of homes to cover the costs associated with development. So based on the extensive biology mitigation and other development costs, there were too few homes in the subdivision really to make it worthwhile for the home builders. And then the other item that really contributed to the project not working for the home builders is that the right along, the right of way along Cornell was uncertain since it was under county control and not under city control. So based on what we learned from that effort in 2012 and the following years, the city partnered with Arcadia to develop the site because it is important to the city. The city owns a 5.6 acre site that was adjacent to Fairway Oaks. And it's the only part of Fairway Oaks, the project that you see today that is actually connected to the county island. So if you look at the red spot on the map on the screen, it's kind of in the upper left hand corner of it. It's a little bit odd shaped. But the city decided to sell this property because we didn't need it and it really made the project work. And the current city council approved the sale of this property in early 2019. So we believe that we have a partnership moving forward with this development proposal. And the additional property of the city contribution, which will be a sale, makes the project work and gives the developer and potential home builders the yield that they need. So we believe with that, we settled or answered one of the issues that the home builders were facing. So the other issue is then Cornell Road. So in order to help facilitate access on Cornell Road, or I should say improvements, because even without the county island being annexed, we could still build at the end of Cornell Road and still have access. But we would like to see improvements on Cornell Road. So in order to get those improvements, it's better if the city has control of the county island to ensure that that can happen. So that's why we decided to annex. And the best part about the annex as part of this project is the city gets a benefit. The developer pays for it essentially. So this is really a benefit to the city. Can you do next slide, please? So as I mentioned, the annexation is required to ensure site access along Cornell. And in addition to ensuring that access, the annexation provides for more efficient government services and provides the city with control over the land, which is really inside the city boundaries. A recent example of the need to have this land use under control of the city council is that the county recently approved the cell tower in the island annex area. And Galt citizens complained to the city council only to learn that the council had no authority over the county land. So providing council control over this land provides benefits to the developer for sure for Cornell Road, but it also benefits the city and other city residents that are near the county island. I would like to add finally that the project is consistent with the general plan. The general plan map is shown on the right. It shows the city's growth area. And I show a city zoning map, which shows the existing boundary on the left hand side. And you can see our city's kind of misshapen. And there's a couple annexations coming up that are important for the city that I think will help shape our boundaries to make them more logical and connect the two halves of the city and then also get rid of holes in the city. So these are important. And this general plan was approved by council in 2009. And the approval was based on over 50 public meetings and support from the state, the county, SECOG, LAFCO, environmental groups and other local agencies. So annex the island fills a hole in the city and is an important step in fulfilling this general plan. And we as planners take this general plan seriously. And if you look behind me, you'll see these maps that we look to and refer to on a day, on a day to day basis. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Ganos. She will go over the project in more detail. And hopefully I did not steal too much of her thunder on some of the project details. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Cindy. And if the city clerk can pull up the next presentation.
Next slide, please. Mayor and council members, the Fairway Oaks and Island Annexation Project is located south of Glendale Avenue, west of 99, northwest of Dry Creek and north and east of existing Creekside subdivision. The necessary entitlements include annexation, a pre-zoning and rezoning, and a vesting tentative subdivision map. Chris went over a lot of stuff, so I'm going to try not to repeat it as I move forward in, in my presentation. Next slide. As noted in the staff report, LAFCO law now encourages annexation of unincorporated islands that meet a list of requirements and those are detailed in the staff report. This annexation satisfies all of those requirements. The island includes 39 and a half acres to be annexed to the city. Annexation requires LAFCO approval as well as for annexation to the city as well as for detachment from the Slough House Resource Conservation District. The annexation would facilitate city and water being made available, sewer and water being made available to the island properties, but would not mandate they connect until the property is requested to be developed further. Existing uses that are currently allowed by the county will be allowed to be maintained upon annexation until the property is developed in the future. Next slide. The island area currently has county zoning. Annexation requires pre-zoning to a city designation, which in this case would be R1A with a minimum 10,000 square foot lot size, consistent with the low density residential general plan designation. For the Fairway Oaks portion of the project, the existing city zoning designations are R1B, R1C and OS. The applicant is requesting a rezone to OS and R1C plan development, which requires a minimum lot size of 5,500 square feet. The R1CPD zoning designation is also consistent with the low density residential general. The proposed map has a gross density of 3.3 units per acre with the general plan allowing a range of zero to six units per acre. The purpose of the PD designation is not to reduce the minimum lot size, but to allow for adjustments instead of being 55 by 100, some like lots might be 80 by 70 just because of the unusual shape of the property. So the minimum lot size is being maintained. Next slide. The Fairway Oaks tentative map part of the project includes a vesting tentative map that subdivides 48.4 acres into 162 lots, has a 10 acre open space area and a two acre stormwater basin. Access to the site, as Chris described, is from an extension of Ranch Road and Chase Drive, as well as a connection to Glendale Avenue and an extension improvements to Cornell Road. The proposed lot sizes range from 5,500 to 14,000 square feet. And the subdivision has been designed to be compatible with the lot sizes adjacent to the development. For example, 9,000 square foot lots are located adjacent to the Creekside subdivision. 6,700 square foot lots are located adjacent to Glendale Avenue development. And the 50, smaller 5,500 square foot lots are located to the interior of the subdivision. Next slide. The map includes a trail along Dry Creek, adjacent to 99 and wrapping all the way around to B Street, connecting to Glendale Avenue. Passive recreation is provided in the open space along Dry Creek. And the two, two acre stormwater basin is also provided adjacent to the open space. Masonry walls are required for a port, for a portion of the project, including an 11, an 11 foot tall wall along lots 13 through 23 along Highway 99 and an eight foot wall along lots 18 through 22. The project will require design review when specific homes are proposed. And the design review will detail the wall design, landscaping, as well as the design of the homes. Next slide. Trees were one of the concerns from the public at the planning commission hearing. A map has been included as attachment four in your staff report, which is probably easier to read than this one. The Fairway Oaks area includes 29 onsite oak trees. 17 are proposed to be saved and 12 are identified for removal. The 12 to be removed have a diameter at breast height ranging from 15.7 to 53 inches totaling 372 inches. Of the trees being removed, two have health issues, five are in fair condition, three are in good condition and two didn't have a note as to their condition. The mitigation measure in the initial study requires a tree removal permit and replacement in accordance with the city code. Next slide. In terms of SEQA, an initial study mitigated negative declaration was prepared for the proposed project, indicating that it will not have a significant effect on the environment. Mitigation measures were included to reduce impacts to a less than significant level. The initial study mitigated neg deck was released for a public review, 30 day public review period from May 29th through June 29th. We blocked nine comment letters, which are summarized and responded to in the staff report. And a RADA was prepared to incorporate the updated map in the noise report and more specifically lay out the height and the noise wall requirements, as well as make minor topographical updates based on the air district comments. A mitigation monitoring plan was also prepared and is part of your staff report. You received another letter today from an attorney representing the joint union elementary school district. The letter reiterates that the district's fees aren't adequate to cover the cost of school facilities and that the initial study does not address this. The initial study notes that state law currently identifies that payment of school fees is adequate to mitigate project impacts. The letter further notes that indirect impacts related to schools such as traffic and noise due to busing was not addressed in the initial study. And while the initial study did not specifically mention indirect school impacts, the project is consistent with the general plan. So the traffic model that was used to prepare the traffic study included the, a trip distribution based on the location of schools from this project site. And the noise study was based upon the traffic study. So indirect impacts were addressed because of the project's consistency with the general plan. Next slide. On July 9th, the planning commission held a public hearing on the proposed project and recommended the city council approve the project by a vote of three to zero. And next slide. Based on planning commission and staff's recommendation, it's recommended that council take the actions shown on this slide and staff and the applicant are available for questions.
Thank you, Cindy. Councilmember, anybody, any have a comment before we go to the public hearing?
I'll, I'll hold my comments till after the public comment.
All right, then I'm going to open that public hearing. And I would like to ask the applicant, if applicant want a maybe brief description on, on the project? Did you have to come down there?
That would have been Mike Oliver or Michael Fletcher? Probably Mike Oliver.
We have Michael Fletcher on the panel.
Do you see Mike Oliver, maybe from a 510 phone number if he's on the phone?
Michael Oliver just did join us. Michael Oliver, go ahead. Give me one here.
Yeah, this is Michael Oliver. Good, thank you. Yes, Mayor, members of the council. We really appreciate the opportunity this evening to have you review this project. As you know, and it was mentioned by the staff, we've worked together with the city now for about seven years on a variety of different items related to this project. And as you also know, there was a 100 unit map approved here a number of years ago. The city then subsequently contacted us and asked us to participate in expanding the map and including its property. We have also supported the annexation portion of the project and have tried to meet the needs of the community, the city staff, and certainly the council and the planning commission. So we believe that this project meets all of the requirements the city has presented and will be a tremendous asset to the community in the future. Be glad to answer any questions you may have specifically. But we have again spent about two years developing this project to this stage from the time the city contacted us and asked us to, to join in and partner with it.
Thank you. Mr. Oliver, I have a, just one or two questions, then after I will have the public comment. Ben, back 2012, right? This was approved 100 unit, right?
Correct.
And that was, that time there was not anything including the annexation, right? That island?
Yes, that's correct. At that time, there was not a proposed annexation associated with the map.
And the reason why you guys, I, I think we, I, I may be on the planning commission that time then gave it two year like extension and due to, I think, economic, that's why you guys don't, cannot do that project that time?
That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Tina, on a public comment, you want to read the public comment first, if any?
Yes, we do have public comments. The first one is from Teresa Angelica Solorio.
Can you somebody take off that presentation on? Thank you.
Okay, Teresa Angelica Solorio. Dear Mayor Sandu and members of council, I am writing today to express my opposition to the annexation. The proposal to annex the county island is not based on the city's interest to improve the community, but please a developer with very well centered financial interests. The proposed annexation will have a negative impact on the Galt community and not only on the residents of the island. The proposal will set a precedent for future zoning changes in the community, which are likely to disrupt the lifestyle of its residents. In addition, the cost of the project to the city will be much higher than the permit charges and taxes revenues that will be generated. Moreover, several of the properties in our neighbors will be invaded to accommodate public infrastructure for the developer. The only part to benefit from all these efforts will be the developer. I urge you elected representatives of the community to focus on items that benefit this wonderful community. Next is from Dale and LaRonda Templeton and Debbie Templeton. In the several previous annexation threats to the Cornell Road area, I have stated my opposition. Once again, I see no advantage to becoming part of the city. The result will provide us with what we have been avoiding, traffic, noise and people trespassing on our property. I am disappointed that this entire process has been undertaken without a live public meeting and no vote. In fact, annexation without representation. Letters are a poor substitute for face to face communication. I realize that having the developer pay the cost of the annexation is an advantage to the city, but that does not make it necessary or even a good idea. I understand Cornell Road is a tree lined country road that can provide a relaxing stroll away from the clutter of a city street. Currently, a number of nearby city dwellers appear to be enjoying that feature. That quaint aspect will wear off as it, as traffic increases and a bicycle lane appears. The subdivision plans already provide for the safety of two access egress points. Cornell, Cornell Road is just an added luxury. Simply put, the Glendale Fairway Drive connection in first. For the first time, a city official has offered solutions to some of the negative issues where annexation could cause unnecessary hardship and expense to the residents trapped in this change. Well, nothing the city can do will replace the relaxed traffic, noise and private property rights now we enjoy. Mr. Arias has presented a much better image of the annexation that we have seen in the past. I believe he is an honest man. The problem is cities change management on a frequent basis. And our new managers usually feel they are not bound to keep promises made by their predecessors. The promises that the community development director delivered on city letterhead and by phone needs to be guaranteed by a written document, the city council, if you adopt. and by phone needs to be guaranteed by a written document, the city council, if you adopt this annexation. Otherwise, the potential damages to affect landowners create a hardship sufficient to access annexation voided. One, acceptance of currently standing non-conforming structures, fences, water, and subject systems from city letter dated June twelve, twenty twenty, page two, the existing county area, you may continue to own, maintain, and reside in the same manner you currently enjoy, will remain so long as we own the property. Changes include repairs under county low-density residential rules will be will be apply unless we apply for a change. Two, we have the option of buying into city water and sewer. Please verify our telephone conversation that also said we can repair or replace our existing water and sewer system according to the county standards if we choose. Three, Cornell Road is to remain a twenty-foot road and a seven-foot bicycle foot trail and maintained by the city. No sidewalk will be required. No plan for a turn lane exists for a turn lane at the intersection of Cornell and Lincoln. Damage done to to properties due to the modification of Cornell Road will be prepared at no expense to the landowner. Four, fences that are affected by this annexation and work can be replaced in kind if the landowner wishes. Next is from Benjamin and Sharon Mendoza, Mendoza and Anthony and Lisa Ortiz. We have received and read the material sent to our residence, one zero five seven six Cornell Road, which we purchased December two thousand and fifteen. We understand from our neighbors that in the past that this integrating our island into the city galt has always been voted down, voted on, and we're not happy that voting was not an option for us homeowners at this time. This decision the city has made will greatly and negatively impact our quiet street. We moved our family to Galt from Mel Grove, and up to this point, we have felt that it was the best decision we have ever made. We moved to Galt because it was a small town, and we are tired of the congestion of city life. This annexation project will bring unwanted traffic to our street. We are already affected by the traffic from the two churches, a North Lincoln on the weekend. So the thought of adding a hundred and seventy-three homes down the end of our street will make it a disaster trying to get out of the neighborhood. Our street is a long street, thus meaning we will now have to worry about the speeders driving up and down the street. Also, opening up our street to the new home traffic also opens us up to more foot traffic, more opportunities for theft and trespassing on our property. We do understand that new homes will bring revenue to the city of Galt, and we care about the town. However, we feel like it's streets like ours that keep the small-town charm of the city, and therefore we are opposed. We want to keep our street what it is today, a quiet, tree-lined street, a street that people can now walk their pets on, families safely ride their bikes on, the horse owner can ride his horse on, a street that we can safely get in and out of. We ask that our street not be an entry or exit for the new housing project, and that since we are the ones who will be most affected, that our voices be heard and taken into consideration. We are aware that this annexation could happen, and with that being said, we request the solutions that city official Mr. Arias offered be guaranteed in writing by the city council if the project is adopted. One, Cornell Road is to remain a twenty-foot road and a seven-foot bicycle foot trail and maintained by the city. No sidewalk will be required. No plan for a turn lane exists for a turn lane at the intersection to Cornell and Lincoln. Damage done to to properties due to the modification of Cornell Road will be repaired at no expense to the landowner. Two fences that are affected by this annexation and work can be replaced if landowner wishes. Three, we have the option of buying into city water and sewer. If we choose to repair or replace our existing water and sewer system, we can do so according to county standards. Four, acceptance of currently standing non-conforming structures, fences, water, and subject systems from city letter, June twelve, twenty twenty, page two, the existing county area, you may continue to own, maintain, and reside in the same manner you currently enjoy, will remain so long as we own the property. Changes including repairs under county low-density residential rules will be applicable unless we apply for a change. Then we have one from Wendy and Reed Blevins. Since the mid nineteen-eighties, real estate developers have approached the city with plans to create a housing subdivision on the fifty-point-five acre parcel of land currently known as the Fairway Oak Site. Every time a subdivision is proposed, the developer asks to include the annexation of the nearby thirty-nine-point-five acre county island because they need Cornell Road as an additional access point. As I stated in my letter to the Galt Planning Commission dated July ninth, two thousand and twenty, my husband and I are longtime owners of two parcels located on the north side of Cornell Road with the thirty-nine-point-five acre unincorporated county island. Over the years, we, along with numerous neighbors, have consistently expressed our wishes that our properties remain county land and not be annexed into the city. Once again, I am writing to express my preference that my property remain county land and request that it not be annexed to the city as part of the proposed Fairway Oak subdivision and County Island annexation project. Chris Arias, the community development director, has assured me there would be no impact to my parcels if the proposed subdivision and island annexation project were to move forward. For peace of mind, I would like to have something legal in writing to reinforce those words. Knowing that Mr. Arias is leaving his position in Galt, I would like to wish him the best and thank him for being forthcoming and responsive to my concerns. In closing, I am in favor of the subdivision, but I am concerned for the property owners within the county island and would like a legal written guarantee that we may continue to use and enjoy our land as we have for decades. That is it right now for written public comments.
Mayor, I have two public comments via Zoom. I have Addison Covert. Addison, go ahead and. Addison, you are up for your public comment?
Yes, I am. Can you see me as well as hear me?
Yeah, Mr. Addison.
Yes, sir.
You have a five minute to make the public comment, please.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I think I can do it within that period of time. First of all, let me start by telling you how much I appreciate the fact that you're allowing me to make this brief presentation on behalf of the Galt Joint Union Elementary School District. This, of course, is one of three projects, and there may be others that you're considering. And the critical project is not so much the one we're talking about this evening, but instead it is the Simmerhorn Project, which has identified within it a proposed ten-acre elementary school site that the school district is very interested in making sure becomes something that may someday become a community asset for the school district and serving elementary and middle-school age students. But at the same time, as you're well aware, there are additional projects coming online. It's not sure today where the school board will be deciding to draw attendance boundaries to serve these future projects. However, it's logical to think that the proposed students that might come from the current project that you're considering this evening would be attending a new elementary school nearby within the Simmerhorn Project. Might not be, might be, who knows? But the real reason I'm here to address you this evening is to discuss about funding issues, which drive so many of the decisions that you and other public agencies make. The school district is very sympathetic about that. But for quite some time now, the state of California has had an inadequate program when it comes to the funding of construction of new schools to address growing residential development within the state of California. And I like to talk very briefly about the funding sources that are available for school construction because there are essentially three, and I think we can think of it simply in the context of a three-legged stool. It's certainly the case, as Ms. Nos pointed out, that developer fees will be paid by these developers, this project and the other two that you will be considering here in the next few weeks, for school construction. But the developer fees the developers pay is only a portion of the cost of 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 new schools to serve new development. Another portion of that cost comes to the state of California's school funding program, and the remainder of that cost, the third leg on that stool, is unfunded at this time. Now, the school district and the city council faced a very similar set of facts in two thousand and sixteen when the council approved the Liberty Ranch Project. Sun Cal at that point worked carefully, as did city staff and city council, with the school district to come up with a funding arrangement to fund that remaining one-third need of school construction cost. That successful agreement was entered into in two thousand and sixteen. The school district has always appreciated the cooperation of staff and the council in reaching that agreement. I don't know if anybody knew we'd be sitting here in two thousand and twenty without seeing those homes built out there, but here we are. But at the same time, I think when you're placed in a position to make decisions with new facility construction within your boundaries, it's only prudent that you can do everything you can to make sure there's adequate revenue to ensure that public school facilities are going to be funded. The school district, as a matter of fact, is scheduled to meet Friday with representatives of the Simmerhorn Project, and the school district would look forward to meet with representatives of this project as well as the third project to make sure that adequate funding for these schools is provided for in a timely manner so that school construction and school enrollment needs can be fully accommodated. I'd like to wrap my comments up because I don't want to go beyond my timeline, but I think are very couple important issues I want to make sure I mention. We very much appreciate Mr. Arias' cooperation in this process. Current city managers have done a great job. We're looking forward to working with your future city manager, who I understand may be coming online shortly. But I'm here on behalf of the school district to request that we continue to receive that cooperation and that the city take every step that it feels that it can legitimately take to support the school district in its need to work with this developer, to work with the Simmerhorn developer, and work with the third project developer that's on your proposed list of projects over the next few weeks to make sure we can arrange for adequate school funding for these school facilities. The school district is dedicated to work cooperatively to accomplish that goal, and my role here tonight is to make sure that the approximate five hundred sixty-seven new students that could be enrolling from these homes, if all projects are built out, are provided with adequate school facilities in school facilities that meet the needs of the Galt community. So I'm going to wrap my comments up there with ten seconds to spare. How's that? Kudos to somebody that pays attention to the timeline. But I will stop, and I'll be available to answer any questions if there are any at any time. Thank you very much. We appreciate your help.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead, Council Vice Mayor Lisanne.
Yeah, Mr. Covert, I have a couple of questions for you, if you don't mind. Are you still on?
Yes, I am.
Okay, I appreciate it. Appreciate you coming out and speaking tonight. And and so and in just a personal note for me, I too value education and and supporting our education partners here in the city and and you know, will do whatever I I can in my mind and in my power to to assist you know, our school districts with whatever they need to to be one community. I just have a couple of questions for you. In terms of funding issues and construction, I understand the three-legged stool and and how that works. So you have developer money, you have state money, and then you have the local funding match, right?
Correct.
Okay, and so who who determines the the dollar amount assigned to impact fees for developers to develop their their properties? Who who's the, is it the state that does that, or or who does that?
Yeah, the state has a mandatory program for school districts to follow to gain the eligibility to establish that first leg of the stool, the fee program that developers pay for the privilege of building homes in a community. And a school district qualifies to establish that fee by having a program. My dog just came running downstairs hungry for dinner. That's the problem with having to attend a meeting in your family room. But a school district gains the eligibility to participate in that program and establish a local fee by meeting those state criteria, and there's a cap on that fee. And as I mentioned previously, it's generally perceived to be about one-third or so of the total cost of new school construction, hence that three-legged stool feature you're talking about. I thought the next question you might be wanting to ask is, who determines that third leg of the stool? The amount of the local additional fee that gets determined? We're participating in that process right now. City councils, when they're reviewing development projects with input from developers and with input from school representatives, come up with a solution and an approach on how to fund that unmet need. Mr. Campion is smiling, if I can be so bold as to say that because he sat through some of these very same conversations several years ago with River Islands. Some of you also may have done that at that same time, but I particularly remember Mr. Campion's efforts during that.
Okay, Mr. Covert, so I have a follow-up question to my first question. What latitude does the individual district have to determine fees as it relates to their particular area? I understand, you know, the state of California is a large, large chunk of land. It goes, you know, obviously from Oregon down to the Mexican border. I I would suspect that there are different needs throughout that area, and I can't imagine one specific formula that would that would cover construction costs for all of that area. So again, I go back to my question of what latitude does each individual district have in in setting those fees? Or are you saying that, because what I'm understanding from your first statement is that the district has no control over the amount of fees that a developer pays to assist in developing schools?
And 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 that is generally a correct statement. Our state legislature has created very stringent guidelines in the government code that calculate the measure and the manner in which school districts can establish those fees. There's a maximum per square foot-based fee that the school district can charge less than that maximum fee, but they may not exceed that maximum fee. And most school districts, when they see that they're only only receiving one-third of the necessary funds for new school construction from that state mandated fee, are capable by following the state's standards for establishing that fee to establish that fee at its maximum rate. Now, in your community, you have two school districts, of course, a high school and an elementary school district. That maximum fee is calculated on a kindergarten-through-twelfth-grade configuration level. So the elementary district has to actually cooperate and coordinate with the high school district to make sure that neither of the two districts ever charge a fee that exceeds the state's mandated K-12 maximum fee amount.
Okay, I I think this is an important topic, and and I and I just want to understand, and and you have to excuse me for my ignorance. So so what you're saying is, is there's a maximum fee that districts can can charge on or can require developers to pay in terms of impact? And that has to be calculated, but with both in our in our case, both the high school and elementary district in cooperation, so as not to exceed that fee. So is there a process in which you use to approve that fee annually? And I'm gonna I'm gonna just kind of give you an example of where I'm coming from. Annually, in in cities and special districts and whatnot, that we have fee schedules that we look at to determine whether or not they apply to the going rates or if the C P I needs to be, you know, adjusted and not adjusted, but added to our fees or or if we're charging for something that we really shouldn't be charging for. So is that is that a process in which the school district actually goes through and says, here is the fee for this year?
Yes, that's correct, except the school district doesn't establish the fee itself independent of the state. The State Allocation Board at the state level will determine, has there been an increase in the cost of construction across the board over the prior twelve months? And if they determine that it is, then they'll calculate what that increase is at the state level on a statewide basis, and they'll adopt a resolution and which will give local school districts the ability to increase their maximum fee, but only so much as to match that increase that the State Allocation Board has found to be consistent with what the state has calculated is the construction cost index increase for the prior twelve months.
Okay, all right, and 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 if I may be so bold to say that, I think that's an absolute crime. I think we should have some more local control in 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 what we do in terms of our school districts and 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 developer fees and and things like that. I would suspect that it costs a few more dollars to to build a a school in, and I'm just gonna throw a county out, but like in in Los Angeles County than it does in Mendocino County or something to that, maybe it doesn't. But I just think it's it's an absolute crime if that's the way our state has chosen to do business. One, one other question and then a comment for you. The question is, as it relates to impact fees, is there a a let's just say, for instance, that a development develops, yet there's no school that goes in for ten years that that those. for 10 years that that those impact fees would be used for. And maybe that's too long, maybe it's five years. Where where do those impact fees go? And is it into an interest-bearing account or or how does that work?
Our state legislature happens to be very thoughtful with respect to money and the collection of fees at the local level, and they've addressed that issue you're talking about right now with specific legislation several years ago that said that when those developer fees are retained in an account and unspent over a five-year period of time, that they're subject to being refunded unless there are certain tests that the school district can prove that they're meet that they meet that allows them to retain those funds on deposit in a district fund typically with the invested at the county level for a period of time in excess of the five years. Some school districts are able to establish that test and retain those monies. Other school districts in communities that have slowed down significantly have been forced to refund those those fees. Probably not as often, but there is a spec again, a specific statute that regulates that process.
Okay, and 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 so it sounds like it's very similar to what when like a park district would collect Quimby fees and put them in an impact account and at some point they're refundable to the developer should the projects not get put on the board.
Yeah, very similar, yes.
Okay, okay. And 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 then just my comment, and I want to apologize to 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 my colleagues and staff for asking so many questions regarding this issue. I usually try to do my homework ahead of time, but I honestly just received an email at 3:20 this afternoon that had some of these issues in them. And that's when it was, you know, certainly raised to the level that I that I had to ask more questions. So I thank you. You know, Mr. Covert, for being patient with me and and I appreciate you, you know, you're answering the questions.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Along the line, I have a little bit clarification on that letter we received today. Anybody from the staff or from the city attorney, can you address the letter we received today?
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor, I I did have a couple of questions of.
Go ahead, Councilmember Campion first.
Thank you. Addison's Kirk Campion. Are you still there?
Yes, I am.
Good to hear from you. On the the in what you've been talking with Vice Mayor with, that is, you you've been targeting mostly the statutory fees that are allowed to be collected for schools, correct?
That's right.
Okay, and so then the third leg becomes the local funding, which is what you alluded to with the East Area Specific Plan, whereby the developer met with the school districts to come up with a I don't know if you want to call it a bridge or whatever, but a an additional financing mechanism to to be able to fully fund what is necessary or perceived necessary by the district, correct?
That's right.
Okay. In the past, and and I know, and I believe it was, I worked with you, didn't the school district at one time have in place a Melrose District for school financing, which allowed, I think, three different alternatives, full tax, partial payment, or or full fee, something to that effect?
You have an excellent memory. The school district did at one point in time have a Melrose District for school construction. It was it was operated by a joint powers agency that was made up of both of both the elementary district and the high school district. That JPA has sold all of the funds that it was ever authorized to sell. It's collected all the taxes it's ever been authorized to collect and spent the money to build schools improvements within the portion of the city of Galt that was in that Melrose District because the Melrose District only encompassed a small portion of the greater Galt community, but it's outlived its purpose. It's in the process soon presumably of being completely dismantled, but this year, in fact, is the last year and next year are the last years in which it will be making the final payments on its bonds and continuing to collect tax monies from the homes that are in the boundaries of that Melrose District. But that Melrose District does not include either the East Area Specific Plan or any of the developing areas we're talking about now. It, in effect, was used as the third leg of the stool way back when in the 90s, when it was established to help address this issue.
Right. Is there a reason that the district would not, again, you know, looking into the future? And the reason I bring this up, look at forming a subsequent district to address this need because otherwise it it appears that it's on a case-by-case basis, which isn't easy for you, it isn't easy for the school district, isn't easy for the development community, and isn't easy for the community in general. Has there thought been given to that to look at something that when a developer comes to this community, he knows what to expect? Because like tonight, we we have a situation where we've got a an uncertainty. And I don't know that there is a, you know, a dollar amount or a or a correct or 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 good estimate as to what we're talking about here in terms of dollars of this for this third leg. So I guess that's kind of my question.
Yes, let me try to address a fairly complicated question as simply and briefly as I can. Some school districts around the state have engaged in cooperative efforts like that you're describing, working closely with their local city governments and county governments to make that happen. It could be something that could be that could evolve here. It's not that common. I think the key in the Galt community is the fact that both the high school district and the elementary school district have been successful in going to the existing voters within the district and getting their approval for general obligation bonds. But that bond revenue is tied strictly to the refurbishment, safety, security, reconstruction, rehabilitation, remodeling of schools that frankly, in some cases, need a lot of attention, and the districts are both doing a terrific job in making that happen. But that bond money that was not promoted to the local voters in Galt as a source of revenue to fund the cost of new construction in new homes. I think the presumption is new development and and new developers pay their fair share of all costs when they come online with the new community. And that is something that the city council has certain powers to regulate and control, much like you did in 2016 with the East Area Specific Plan with establishing the third leg there. And much like we're hopeful that we can accomplish now in cooperation and coordination with you and your staff and your team and and the developers that are before you now.
So so for purposes of of this project, and and I understand that the the school district has concerns in the event that the city council does approve it. What is it that the that the school district would look for at this time?
The continued and ongoing cooperation of developers, city staff, city council, and other people involved in the process to make sure we can get as far and and as quickly as we can to a mutually satisfactory arrangement that could be presented to you for your nod and approval like you did in 2016 or could simply be a separate standalone contract between one or more developers and the school district in order to address this issue.
Well, you know, I I agree with Rich. I I think that the city has a a clear history of working with the districts to address the issue of overcrowding and the need for new construction. And and I don't think that that is an issue that should be a problem in this case or any other. At least that's that's my own opinion, you know, based on the history here in the city and what we've been able to accomplish, what the city's been able to accomplish with school districts in the past. And and I can recall, you know, clear back in the 90s. That was basically, I think, it was it was basically bringing the city and the school districts and the developers together and to come up with that funding program which lasted, well, almost 30 years. Addison, I I have any more questions for you, but I do appreciate your participation and your input.
Thank you very much for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Addison. Now, I would like to ask the city or city attorney, the letter we received from Mr. Addison, if somebody can address that.
Mayor, we have one more hand raised for the member of the public. Do you want to take that first or do you want to?
No, let me, because we still, public hearing is open. We can stay. Let me address this thing first.
So I I would like to answer that, not to step on the city attorney's toes, but the letter that you received today is very similar to the letter we received on the environmental document. And we addressed their concerns regarding the environmental document in the staff report. So we didn't ignore the comment on the environmental document. I think if you look in the staff report under the sequence section, you'll see how we respond to that. But having said that, you know, one of the things that makes Galt attractive for home buyers is a great school district. So we have no intention of shortfalling or wanting to shortfall the school district to provide adequate facilities for schools because that would remove one of the benefits Galt has for families. You know, we have great parks, we have great school district and a great police force. It's very family-oriented community. So we we do not prefer or do not want to go and leave the the school district short. So we would be and we would be interested in conditioning the project if we get to that approval to include some sort of resolution with the school district to make sure that they have the means necessary to ensure funding for future schools, much like they did for Eastview, as was mentioned, and Liberty Ranch, but then also they're currently working with Elliot Homes in the Simmerhorn Ranch project. So I would just recommend when we get there, including some sort of condition to require the developer to work with the school district to make sure they are providing that funding for any potential shortfalls.
And I would just note that, as you heard, there's the school fees issues, but then there's also the environmental, which that, as the community development director noted, the impacts of the schools on traffic and that are are addressed in the MND. So really, what we heard tonight was more about the school facilities fees, which, as you heard, are kept under the statute. So it's obviously working with the developer who I I believe Mr. Rice can confirm is amenable to such a condition, which would be an important factor.
That is correct.
So, Mr. Reyes, you said if we approve the project, then we can walk work after the fact?
We can, your approval can, your approval of the map can be conditioned or with the added condition that the school district, that they work with the school district to provide adequate funding to cover potential shortfalls similar to Liberty Ranch and Simmerhorn Ranch.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I just have one comment about that.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Vice Mayor.
Thank you. It makes me, and I spoke with the city manager about this earlier, and I just want to make it public statement that it makes me a little nervous that that we will be relying on the school district and the developer to come up with what's reasonable and hinging. And I'm just saying, if this if this project were to be approved on on something that's not certain, if we could, I would like to at least put something in there that either states directly or maybe through legal jargon that the the city attorney could come up with that doesn't allow for the city to be on the hook for any of that. Here we are in our, you know, our house, you know, looking at a project, but we're relying on somebody who doesn't, who we don't have legal authority over to determine how that works. And so I just, I'm just a little nervous about that and and is there something that we can do? Because vagueness sometimes gets you in trouble. And if I'm totally off base here, City Attorney or Chris Ariz, let me know. But I do remember in the not-so-distant past, you know, vague statement got, you know, people upset. And so I just want to make sure that we're covering our bases.
Well, I don't I don't think you're being unreasonable to request that whatever language is in there protects the city from covering any shortfall. To me, that's a reasonable request that I would think that we would be able to accommodate. You know, one of the concerns I have about this approach really centers on fairness of development. So we get this letter from the school district for every development and you know, we respond typically in the same manner that we believe the impact fees cover the cost. But we also have projects where you have one home, two homes, and they don't pay this extra cost even though they have the same burden for the school district per home. So to me, I would like an even playing field for development. So I think it's incumbent really on the school district to come up with some approach that treats each single-family home, each apartment, each growth-inducing development equal. And it's not, it's not fair for the developer of larger projects to have to pay more for the shortcomings. So I think there are other concerns that play into that. Fortunately, we've had developers that understood, you know, the benefits of good school districts and have been workable with these agreements.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate that. And I didn't even hadn't even thought further down the road like you just mentioned about, you know, an equity issue as it relates to scale of development. So I appreciate those comments. And 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 like I said, I mean, I just want to make sure that since we're on the topic that that the city's not, you know, that we're not having an unintended consequences down the road when the development happens or when the payments have to be made that we're we're stuck, you know, having to sign over a check because we either, well, in this case, it would be only on our approval, but if if it were to be approved, that we approved it and and we're on the hook. So that's all I have. I appreciate the comment. I didn't realize that we get those letters regularly from 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 the school district and and I was just caught off guard by getting it at 3:20 today.
Mr. Mayor, if I if I may. And I I I echo Chris's comment. It 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 becomes somewhat disproportionate based on the size of a project and which was kind of alluded to my earlier comment is if there were a a mechanism established that would provide some level of uniformity so that when people come forward, they know what to expect from day one and that you are not hit with, you know, some some new or higher fee than what was anticipated. So I I agree with what Rich is saying, and I agree with what Mr. Ariz is saying, that that if we're going to do this, then we need to look at something that works for all the development, not just some. And and I think that's not only a matter of fairness, but it's a matter of of new development, regardless if it's one home or 50 homes that they pay their fair share for those impacts associated with new development. And 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 you know, that's that's completely consistent with what our general plan says in the area of new construction and new development. So I I and I think that, you know, by by developing a condition of approval as suggested by the city attorney whereby satisfactory mitigation would need to be provided to the city prior to the issuance of building permits, that that would go a long way in determining whether the school district and the developer were able to come to terms. And I and I and I think that puts the onus on the individuals most eminently affected.
Thank you. And always go ahead with the next.
Actually, Mr. Mayor, I have, Mr. Covert has another comment to make. I will go ahead and let him speak.
Yeah, go ahead.
Mr. Covert, go ahead. You're on mute. You'll need to unmute yourself. Thank you.
Thanks for that coaching. I need all the coaching I can get when it comes to operating these new-fangled computers. Can you hear me now? Okay. The the only point I wanted to make was, I think the school district would very much welcome the opportunity to try to work towards a goal of establishing a more uniform across the board school facility program in cooperation and coordination with city staff and the and the council. But tonight and over the next couple of weeks, several weeks, you'll be looking at 567 new homes coming online. And so our goal is And so our goal is to try to make sure we can get something happening quickly with respect to these imminent projects. And then on a long-term basis, see if we can adjust and, and implement something that brings that kind of assurance that you all are, are, are trying to establish. That's my other comment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, next I have Sean Farmer. Sean, go ahead.
Thank you, Rose. So as, as someone who lives right up adjacent to the, to the county notch and, and near this project and, and I, and not only recently moved back, but, but grew up in this neighborhood and has spent, you know, a lot of my childhood on Cornell Road and in this area. So I, I, I know it very well. And so I'd like to start off saying I, I don't oppose the project. I, I, I think, you know, I, I support the project. As it fills, it fills in a notch, a puzzle piece. But I do have some specific concerns with just a few details of the project that I just wanted to bring forth that, that, that probably been echoed by other of my fellow neighbors in the area as well. One of them has to do specifically with the outlets of the project. I, I, I think, you know, with, with Glendale and Ranch, I feel are the main outlets. I, I just personally, and, and I think this is shared by many others who live not only in Creekside, but also in the county island, that Cornell and, and even Chase Drive are just, I, I just don't think they're necessary. Chase specifically, although it is a dead end street and, and it, obviously, if you look at an aerial map, it looks like it would obviously at some point continue on. It doesn't really serve any purpose. Ranch Road is literally five houses over. I just feel like it would be better served to leave that a dead end, not only for the residents of Chase Drive, but also for the residents of the new development along that row. In regards to Cornell, I, I, you know, I'm thinking out loud here. I know that, you know, these people are people that we're now bringing into, we're welcoming into our city. They're, they're not city residents now, but they're going to be city residents should this project move forward. And, and I feel like it's just kind of, you know, possibly something to throw out there as a compromise. And I know that Cornell, the, the development of Cornell Road by the developer is, is very, you know, advantageous to the city. I, I get that. But if we're going to annex this island, maybe we should consider possibly leaving Cornell Road alone. I, I know, I'm certain the project does not hinge on that access point. And by doing that, we would be leaving these folks with something of the, the little slice of country that they still enjoy while still bringing them into the city. So we're still getting, we're still getting, I think, the better deal as far as the city's concerned, but we're also making a compromise. So those are a couple of my things. The other was traffic on Lower Stat coming down to the, if, if this should be, you know, approved as is, you have access off Cornell Road. You know, that's a, that's a dangerous people's speed coming into town right there. They don't even start slowing down till they're already passed like Southdale and Melody, and they're coming up to that stop sign at, at Chabola there. And so it's, 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 it's a dangerous intersection. I would be concerned of the speeds that people are trying to pull out there with the increased traffic. And another concern would be, there's been some, some comments I, I saw at the last planning commission meeting where there was some concern about the green space. Whether, you know, there's concern of the homeless impact in that green space back there. And I know that's been a challenge for the city to, to deal with that. So I, I would be concerned about us being able to keep a handle on that. And then, and last, you know, I received a letter as, as most citizens did in the area, it was mailed June twelfth. And in that letter, it, it kind of covered the broad strokes of, of this project. And it mentioned, you know, that there was going to be an open house meeting with the developer and the city where people could come and there'd be a Q and A. And obviously that never happened. And so, and we know why. We know the COVID thing is really just kind of upended a lot of plans. But my concern is here is that, you know, this whole thing has been been in the works for many, many years, this, this annexation. And now it's going to culminate in this, in this, you know, over, over the, in cyberspace. And, you know, a lot of these people don't have access to Zoom. They don't, they're not comfortable shooting emails out. They want to come, they want to speak with their, their elected officials, and they want to see people face to face and get their, their concerns answered. And it, and it's, it's, it makes them feel more comfortable to work out and hash out those details that way. And the way this has kind of come to, come to pass without that, that public interaction face to face and without this, this open house that was kind of promised, it, it just seems to build the distrust with the community that, that, you know, we're always up against. And so I just, I'm disappointed that that has to be that way. And I think that's been echoed by a lot of my neighbors is that. And so I would just think that the council would just consider some of these thoughts in their, in their deliberations. And the last is these comments about the school. I, I, I think that's an awesome idea to come up with something moving forward. If we don't, we're just going to leave our school district hanging out to dry. We can't just leave something out there like, oh, well, we'll just come up with something when the time comes. Because like he said, five hundred more houses, you're looking at eighteen hundred more citizens, you know, that could be five hundred, six hundred, eight hundred more kids. It's a huge impact. We have to have a plan in place. So thank you for the time to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Farmer.
And Mr. Mayor, I have one more written comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is from Terry Parker. Let's see here. I own property in the island. The neighbor had an active burglar and it took two hours for sheriff to get there. His wife and kids were there alone. It's a small island at far south of Stat County. The county doesn't want it, sheriff. The sheriffs do not patrol our area. I have a friend who was a sheriff in the South County area and he didn't even know he had this area. It wasn't until the neighbor had their issue. Islands are not good for the property owners. The city needs to do the right thing, keeping the reassurance that existing homeowners will not incur any additional fees or requirements.
Thank you. Rose, anybody else on Zoom webinar?
No, I have no more raised hands.
No public comment, right?
No, that's correct.
So if there is no public comment, I would like to close the public hearing. And now I would like to ask council member, any comment, anything on this project? Vice Mayor Lisanne.
Yeah, I'd, I'd like to say a few things. I just, we just stand by for one second. I'm, I have my other computer going and I'm trying to pull up my notes here on the, on the staff report. Okay, so I have a couple of comments. Well, I guess questions. And I guess it's more probably for Mr. Arias here in a few seconds. But my comments first are this. You know, we have, we have this island area that is serviced by the county at some level. And, and it certainly, you know, surrounds the entire, or the city surrounds it entirely. And I think from, you know, from the perspective of providing service, more, more specifically law enforcement services, I, I, I believe that our, our Galt Police Department will go in there, even if it is his county. You know, that's just what they do when, when called upon by the sheriff. But the, the bottom line is, is it's, it's if a report needs to be made, there, the, the folks in that island are not going to get the service that they will for the, with the Galt Police Department. So that's my first question. I have some concern, not concerns, I guess, questions from Mr. Rice about two things. One, I am, I, I, I have spoken with some folks that live in the, in the, the island area. One in particular today, and we had a long discussion about, about, you know, whether or not it would be advantageous for the, for the community there, the residents there in the, in the county to be a part of the annexation. And, and he was clearly not, was not in favor of the annexation, but did make a couple of good points. And he said that Mr. Rice had done a, a pretty decent jo- a really good job, I think, is what he said. At, and came up with a pretty good plan to take care of well over half of their needs, as I understand it correctly. And, and, and address their concerns. And we heard it in public comment tonight about getting something put in writing so legally down the road when potentially all of us are gone that are on the meeting tonight and are left with the, with their properties over there. Those protections are, are still in place. And, and related to, and I'm going to use the term, don't know if it's the correct term, but the, the grandfathering of some of the structures and, and, you know, the, the concern of whether or not they, they, they have to access city sewer or water. And, and I think that's the right thing to do at, to the level that we can to put those concerns in writing so that down the road there, they have some protections. Now, I understand that if there's some significant improvement done to the property that, then that triggers some other city issues. But up until then, I think they should have those, those protections as, as presented. So Mr. Rice, my question is this, in, in terms of those comments that were made, is that something that we can do as a piece of the annexation? And if so, what kind of writing would that be?
Good question. My preference would be not to. My, so we've got two, I think there's two primary things going on for the annex people. One is legal non-conforming use. And I don't think they need anything in writing from me because they have something in writing in our development code in chapter eighteen, which regulates legal non-conforming uses. So the development code itself covers legal non-conforming uses and legal non-conforming buildings. So there's a code section that specifically dictates how we deal with uses that we, you know, that were approved years before a current code update or before it became part of the city. So do they need something from me to reference that code? Sure, I'd be willing to do that. From the, from the sewer and water and, you know, it's the whole septic well issue. We, we have a code section there too that provides us language on maintenance versus replacement. And I think one of the commenter said that if they were to replace it, they would be allowed to. I would say it depends. It really depends on the extent. And I'm not sure the county would be supportive of replacement of septic. And I'm not even sure it would be worth their while to replace septic based on some environmental concerns and costs. My guess is it would be cheaper for them to tap into sewer that would be nearby. So perhaps that could work with the Public Works Director to provide some language pointing us back to our code, which then dictates how we deal with sewer and water connections.
And I, I would just note to make sure we're not, there's a misunderstanding here that, you know, with a legal non-conforming use, you, you don't, you're not requiring any changes right now, certainly. But I, I will say if somebody were to do something to change their property, to want to develop it, do something significant, that would trigger application of the city's new requirements. So I just did want to clarify that. It doesn't mean we, we can make a promise that we won't ever require those changes. And, you know, Lafco, that would be against, you know, their annexation requirements and such. And as Chris noted, there may be times when with the water and sewer that, you know, there may be a connection at some point in time, certainly nothing on the horizon, but depending on water quality issues or what's happening there. So there's, as non-conforming use, we're not, we're certainly not saying they need to, they're, they're not, you know, that they are, have to make a change now and some of the uses will certainly comply with, be conforming with the city's zoning. So I just wanted to clarify that.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yeah, go ahead.
But by way of example, you know, just to give an example in the city, in the, in the city is that I'm aware of. Many of you are aware of the Cordova or Cordoza Dairy down on Cost Road in the subdivision across the street. That individual has operated his dairy since the eighties as a legal non-conforming use. And he had the same concern, I can remember in the late eighties, whether he would still be able to run his barical there. Well, that's, that, that's a much more impactful situation than I think that we, we were talking about here in terms of legal, legal non-conforming use and or legal non-conforming structures. So I think that, you know, historically, you look at what the city has done in the past and, and, and the steps that have been taken, I think it has been minimal. And as a matter of fact, I don't know that it, that, I don't know that that particular section of the code has ever in my almost forty years here been implemented in terms of, of corrective action. You know, I, I, I just, I don't think it ever has. So I, I don't know, that's not a legal guarantee, but it provides some level of history. And I understand, you know, and I, I've known the Templetons and the Blevins, and I've talked to all of them over the years, and I understand their concerns about no change, you know, living in the county. But I, I, at the same time, I, I think that there are benefits to them as individuals, if for nothing else, response times with regard to public safety, particularly police. That I see as a, a very significant issue. And, and although I haven't read your letter, Chris, you know, there are, and I think you outlined it, there are no differences in property tax. It does not change. Your property taxes do not go up. You don't receive a city bill unless you have city water, sewers and, and garbage. So those bills remain, you know, or costs are, are, are non-existent, for lack of a better term. I, 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 I thought it was interesting, the comment made by Mr. Farmer about Cornell Road and, 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 and if with regard to leaving it alone, should the property be annexed? I mean, the way I read it now or the way I understand it, Chris, is if the project is approved and the annexation goes forward, then it's incumbent upon the developer to do those improvements which have been identified within the report to Cornell Road, which are minimal, but they may have some impact on some of those property owners. Is that correct?
That's correct.
That's correct.
That's, that's correct. I want to talk, I'm sorry to interrupt you, Mr. Campion, but just to finish up on Cornell Road. So when this project came forward in its current form, we had a, a few goals that we wanted to achieve with it because we honestly are interested in trying to minimize the impact of development because I understand that's the issue at hand. It really is the development and the other, and the new homes coming into an area where there were no previous homes. We've been down this road, not just with this project, but with others as well. Nobody likes new homes coming into them when they've lived next to a vacant field for a number of years. So we try to be respectful of that. We know change is hard. So on Cornell Road in particular, we tried to respect the rural nature of Cornell Road. So what we did is we did a couple of things. One is we made sure that no homes front Cornell Road. So you'll see no single family homes that get their access from Cornell Road. There will be some that back up to it, but they'll, they'll be treated with landscaping where you won't even see those homes back there. Then for the city portion of Cornell Road, we're not requiring them to develop it to city standard. We want it to match and mirror more of what is in that county, current county, rural area. So our goal is to really just minimize the view and impact on Cornell Road. So now, and that was one goal. The other goal was on, on Chase Drive and Ranch Road. We know we have bigger sub, bigger lot subdivisions that face the gulch. So we wanted to carry that over. So Cindy brought this up in the presentation where you see the larger lots to the south of the subdivision next to Creekside subdivision. So you've got, you know, like uses next to each other. You have then larger lots, well, not larger, mid-sized lots up against Glendale, and then the smaller lots closer to the freeway. So we, we actually worked very hard with the developer to create this plan and in a way to try to accommodate the different needs of the different subdivision. We're pretty adamant and confident that we still need the four points of connection, even though everybody who lives on one of those roads don't want the connection. We just think it's overall important for the overall subdivision. And as I mentioned in my previous, in my intro to the project, and I may have touched on it lightly, the annexation really was at the requirement of the city. So it was the requirement so we can make sure that we have that annex. And also the city, the current city council, as a reminder, approved the sale of the city property. That five point six acre property to include in the project. And the sale of the property is contingent on project approval. And that funding for the project or funding that we receive from the property will go to Parks and Rec because that is where the money came from to buy the property. So there's a lot of benefits from the city for the development. You know, we get the homes, we're filling So there's a lot of benefits from the city for the development, you know, we get the homes, we're filling in our general plan. It's a good development and an infill location close to services. And then the annexation, I think a lot of different people pulled up different benefits of it. But the bottom line is is nobody likes, nobody in the region likes these islands. They even changed, the state. Changed the rules to make it easier to annex the islands and it is essentially for better government. Now, I've been told that police, Gulf Police do respond in the island at times. So to me, if that is the case, that we do have Gulf PD currently responding, then they're getting a benefit. That the city provides without really paying any tax to the city. So to me, if they're going to get the benefits of the city, it's only fair that they be in the city limit. So. There's just a lot of benefits for the annexation. And again, sorry to, it's so, Mr. Lozano, I'm, I hope I answered your question on the letter. I think that the code sections themselves provide that protection. And we currently are processing four annexation applications. And and I think this is why the people want the letters because I've been providing assurances that we have no intention of going rattling the cages. Of people that we're welcoming into the city. We want them to enjoy the life as they see it. But I honestly believe, I think the biggest issue, and I faced this in twenty twelve, is really the development. The development of the site has really brought out the county island folks and they have fought that really just. It really changes the way they're going to live. And to me, the annexation. Whether I'm here or not, their life doesn't change whether or not they're in the city or in the county. But their life will change with development because there are going to be more cars coming by. There are going to be more people. They're going to be more in an urban environment. And that's, that's what our general plan tells us we're supposed to be doing.
Chris, just to clarify your comment about the the taxes. And and public safety, it would really be a transfer of the tax they pay now away from the county and to the city. It it's not that they would be taxed more money for better service. What would happen is what they're paying the county for poor service now. Would under the annexation transfer to the city for excellent service.
That's correct. Very well said.
And and my point earlier about, you know, I know Gulf PD responds, it's just an op, a law enforcement operational memorandum of understanding with. Different law enforcement agencies. You know, if if the county sheriff is forty five minutes away, which would not be uncommon to respond to that area. As the sheriff's patrol area for that would cover that is all of the South County from, you know, Grantline Road South. All the way down to Ileton. So, you know, I I recognize that they're going to call the Gulf PD dispatch and say, hey, can you guys handle this? In progress call for me and if there's a report. You know, that isn't an in progress, like a burglary report or cold report, we'll let the homeowner know, we'll be there when we can get there. And so I I I get that. My other question was there were four points that that related to the concerns. And one had to do with replacement, replacement of fencing. And then I think the other one had to do with. It would maintain a twenty foot wide roadway. And not in that that the city wouldn't require sidewalks installed. Can you speak to that just briefly and then?
So the the fence issue, I don't see that as a problem. I, you know, if you have a legal nonconforming fence and half of it blew over. You're able to kind of put put it back up in the same location. I mean, that again is part of our code. But what was the other question?
Had to do with the width of the.
Oh, the width of the road.
Back and forth here on my on my tablet. So had to do with.
I'm getting older, the memory is getting shorter, but.
Cornell Road remain twenty feet, a twenty foot roadway and seven foot bicycle foot trail.
So that, you know, I'll have the city engineer or Bill Forrest perhaps answer the with question, but. As it is designed, we were improving the pavement on the project applicants required to improve the pavement. And I do believe. They're going from, and Bill, you could correct me if I'm wrong, going from eighteen to twenty feet in the street width. But we are then requiring a five foot combo bike ped path. From the development out to Lincoln on the north side of the subdivision. So that's, that's an air quality requirement and part of the path to provide. Bicycle and pedestrian access in and out of the subdivision. So.
Good evening, Council. This is Bill Forrest, your senior civil engineer overseeing development services. The twenty feet is actually upgrade from the existing width of the pavement roughly. It's about sixteen feet wide. Two eight foot travel lanes in both directions. Where the twenty feet comes from, that's actually a fire code. I didn't find it, but I believe there's actually a condition of approval. In the D's numbers where the fire department states that the minimum width is twenty feet. And so if you look at. TM five of of the the larger tentative map exhibits. What it states is twenty feet of travel and then five foot sidewalk. Separating, separated by a vertical curve. While I have the floor, I I would like to speak a little bit about. The code, what the code states currently states in terms of requiring water and sewer hookups. Basically what it states for both water and sewer, that if you're within four hundred feet of a main. And like in the case of water, you already have a well, but you need a permit to either replace it. Or do significant repair and you're within four hundred feet of a water main. You you shall require now both the water and the sewer have provisos. Essentially giving some discretion to the director of public works in terms of implementing that code. So if they want it on in the writing, so to speak, my suggestion would be. Maybe to add a proviso to the the two sections, water connections and sewer connections. To clarify that just in case, you know, someone twenty years down the road. You know, comes in and their well craps out and and all all the engineer after me sees is that. You know, they're within four hundred feet of a water main and therefore they have to make the connection. One thing I also want to touch on, Councilmember Lozano, is. If one of those properties do come in, say for a substantial development. Or a parcel split, anything that would require furnished improvements. Then they would be at that time required to grant sufficient right of way. To install frontage improvements. To the satisfaction of the city. But right now Cornell Road is frankly the bare minimum. Width in an improved state from what it is now. Twenty foot travel lane and a five foot sidewalk.
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember.
Bill, on on that four hundred foot requirement, to your knowledge, has the city ever implemented that? Water or sewer connection?
Short answer is yes. There's a vacant lot at the corner of B and Fifth. That is about a hundred and fifty feet away from the sewer main and. Anytime anybody comes in, they say, hey, can I just do a. A sewer service? And I said, no, you need to extend the main and then, and that's even within a hundred and fifty feet. The sewer main. So now that's not an existing dwelling. That is a new development. So actually, I I do take that back. I can't think of a circumstance for an existing dwelling where.
Because I was going to say, and and again, to my knowledge, we, the city has never implemented those provisions. They have allowed in the past, to my knowledge, either replacement of the septic and or the well or refurbishment of the well. Simply because of what the hardship would be on the individual.
Right. There there are some cases on the north side of Live Oak that have been annexed as part of the industrial area expansion. And those previously being in the county. Those are on well and septic and we've had people say, hey, I need to get a permit to repair my septic. Can I do that? And in that case, we have applied that standard. What they wound up doing was essentially just doing maintenance on their existing septic system to get it to a functional level and. They didn't have to do anything.
Thank you.
All right. No, I have some question and comment. First of all, I would like to thank you to staff and the developer. Spend a lot of time on that project. But I certainly have a big concern. The one concern is a creekside. The residents, they have a concern. You know, when we all bought the house. And there is a connection, I believe this subdivision having full connection, right, Chris?
That's correct. As as recommended by the planning commission in twenty twelve.
Right, right. And then especially that was when they on a twenty twelve, they they prove. Not only four, they prove one, the three or two, right? That time Cornell was not on. On that, on that planning mission.
So when we brought that project forward initially, we we didn't show the Glendale connection. So. When it first came forward, Cornell, Chase and Ranch, the planning commission then required the fourth at Glendale. So they were then conditioned to apply that.
The the other my question about the island. You know, the island, these these people from long time and back and we try. And then this time that government code five, six, three, seven, five point three. We are using that code. So these people living in that island. Then then county does not have to take a vote. Is that right?
That's correct. I'm why I'm not double checking the number, but I'll take your word for it. But there is a new state law that allows the annexation of islands without a vote of the citizens, the registered voters that live within the island.
Right. And I I did talk to some of them and I then heard that the most of, most of the residents out there. They don't become part of the city. And I see some other annexation, these these resident, they like to become part of the city. And I don't know what we we might be not have a an outreach, a public outreach. Or due to COVID nineteen or or because I don't, I heard from everybody except one or two, they does not want part of a. Part of the city. And then then same thing, my, that's kind of my major two concern. And the third, my concern is, you know, this agenda should be a two part. It should be a project itself. You know, this project is fine. I don't have a problem on that project. Except there is a couple of thing on the project on the access, like in a, for example, on a chase. How to what why the region city want to make these residents out there by chase to make a upset? Because there can be no traffic. If somebody want to go from the new development. To the Creekside development. In taking the exit on a Lincoln Way, it might be they have to cross over five and sixty. And that's 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 kind of thing. If we, and the other thing, I I don't know, you might be no better than me. There is no requirement. To the fire department, they have to have a four. Connection is just only, it is good. Yes, I I I I get it. You know, if the four connection is will be more. The the residence can go from one subdivision to the second subdivision. But if the residence was not happy and we can work with the developer. And there is no really requirement to have to have a four access. I don't know, I'm not for for that. Why we want to make the citizen unhappy if we really does not have a requirement. And same thing like on on the second thing about the island. Island, did you, anybody know how many lots is out there? How many residents on the island?
We do have that count. I don't have it readily available, but we do have a count of residents. Our homes in the in the island and then also a count of parcels and.
And 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 the public, we just only did on 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 the webinar, right? We have no other way. We approach to them and ask them, if you can be part of the city, you guys can be a benefit.
Look, we. We've, we've talked, we spoke with the group numerous, numerous occasions. I mean, it's. Many of the people have been living there for some time, some are newer. So they've been aware that they're in the city's general plan and. They know that we have growth slated for this area. We've talked to them many times. I honestly believe there's not much else we can say to them that's going to change their mind. It's my firm belief that it's the development that they don't, they don't want. And that's evident by my experience in the twenty twelve and getting that project approved that did not conclude the annexation. So in twenty twelve, we did not include annexation of the island. But the county island people had protested the approval of the development site. They had come, they had showed up at planning commission, they showed up at our open houses, they showed up at city council and they opposed development. And that was without annexation. And so I don't believe there's any. Item that I can give them that is going to change their mind on that. And as I stated. Whether or not they're in the county or the city doesn't matter because nothing's going to change for them. As the city manager pointed out, their taxes don't change, their use doesn't change, they're going to stay on their well and septic. The only thing that's going to change is when that development comes and you put a hundred and sixty homes in that location. And so that's when they're going to have a different way of life and that is what they've been very protective of. And I don't blame them. If I were in their position, I might do the same. But the city can't be held hostage in the growth of our general plan by people who don't want development in their backyard. We face this on every project. If you recall, when we had. Cardoso one come through, we had a gentleman who lived on the corner. And I know Mr. Farmer, if he's listening, he was aware of this guy who lived on a similar situation on a street that was stubbed out. And he did not want development coming down his street, even though we had been planning for it for thirty years. So. If we're held hostage by development based on people who don't want new development in their backyard. We might as well fold up the tent and go home. So what else are we left to do if we can't carry out the general plan? That's our marching orders from the public, from the state, from the county. That is what we were told we're supposed to do. So if you have a different approach on how we want to do that, you got to let me know.
No, I I'm talking about we we certainly should be a more outreach to these people. And you know, the people, the residents live over there for a long time. And then the other thing, if the government. Change a code for their benefit and as a council, I have to keep in balance. Yes, I have a best interest to the city, you know, it 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 is the general plan, but I also have a best interest. To treat, make a balance. And and I'm talking, there is no only five or six. And 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 I'm talking, there is no only five or six residents over there, they just say no. There there is lot of residents. And even our own creek side. You know, these people don't want it. Some of the residents, they would, they don't wanna be, you know, on 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 the road connected in the vector.
We face that in almost every project we put forward.
But I, no, no, I I I I understand, you know, you work really hard. That's not, but my, my thing is, there is, there is two. There is two component. The other thing is, that's that annex, all the expense on the annex. And I think the board said the developer going to pay it. What kind of, we are talking about the dollar amount they going to pay?
It's a good question. So they get, with the development, they get kind of an economy of scale. Because the environmental document and some of the planning services kind of overlap. So I would estimate the developers probably paying an extra fifty thousand to accomplish. Uh, the annexation of the island. If the city were to undertake that as an independent project. It would cost us well over a hundred thousand dollars, which is what we paid to annex the industrial area. So we would have to do a standalone secret document, we would have to pay for supplemental planning services. And then all the other documents, and then also the application process through LAFDO. So the city benefits greatly by having the developer pay those costs and get the economy of scale with the project. It's very important that they're linked.
Right, right. But another thing, like, I mean, asking if we, you know, that that subdivision is 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 great. The only thing on the subdivision portion, I have only problem with why we need too many exits. And then I'm, you can, you can work with the two exit, uh, you know, on a Glendale or or on on the rental. Why we need a chase and 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 Cornwall? And then the second thing on the island, I believing, and I believe, I definitely, I was thinking, these people does not get the. Fair opportunity to come in this side or they can get some kind of a sure. A surety, what what can it change when this is come to the city? But 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 I'm talking about like the planning commission have a meeting on, I think on twenty, June twenty fifth. This was the public meeting.
Yeah, correct.
Fifteen days, then they proved three to zero that project, the 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 whole thing. And my, I I do have a concern, because this is, you know, this agenda item. My opinion should be a two component. One is i- i- is the development, the other should be a separate on. On the island.
Mister.
On on the.
If I may add on that point, uh, we do have the resolution separate. So we do have a package as a single project, but the resolutions and your approvals will be separate. So if, you know, you're free to, you know, I guess. Vote on any of those items that you see fit, but we do have those broken into different resolutions. And each require separate council action.
Right, right. But I, you know, I I wanna work with this stuff, I wanna work with my uh council member. But that's, that's the biggest my concerning, because I'm talking about this company, you know, this project come too many thing. One is island, the other is the residents out there on a creek side. They have a lot of concern. The third is is a school concern today. So there is, there is a three big concern. And it's very hard for me, you know, it's very hard for me to decide tonight. It's very hard. I I will ask my, I will ask my other, you know, the council member, if we might we need to. Get more information or get table or or something, you really wanna be. Tonight, and I'm not feel comfortable to vote tonight for whole uh whole agenda.
Mi- Mister Mayor, if I could just offer suggestion, I hear what you're saying. And 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 what I would suggest is, although I think that the. In in terms of the general plan and carrying out the general plan, I can't find, at least in my mind. A a reason uh that that this project is bad in terms of the law. Or and or following the general plan. But what I would offer up is, I I I don't suggest tabling it. I, what I would suggest is, let's. And if I need to, I'll make a motion to do this. Let's, why don't we, why don't we continue this item? Uh, maybe to the the next meeting, which is, I think, August eight eighteen, is that right? I I would suggest uh continuing it to that. I I I would not be in favor of tabling it. Because I think we need to move on this. I truly think that if. Uh, that that the three of us really need to take a hard look at it. I I believe that there are. There could be some other ramifications, uh, if we're, if we're gonna be quite honest in terms of the general plan, what it provides. And what the project aspects are. And so I would, like I said, in in, I'll do what, you know, there's three of us. And whatever you want to do, but I would, I would suggest to continue it to the August eighteenth meeting and have. That gives Mister Mayor you some time to to get some additional questions answered and and then we can move forward.
Uh, wise mayor, I I totally understand with the, with to moving forward. But but I'm, there is a three component on that. It is two weeks, it's not gonna be enough to make a decision. And the thing is like, it is general plan, but general plan does not say you have to have a full exit on on that project.
I agree with you.
And then then the other thing is 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 that on on the annex, yes, we say we can get the benefit. But we have to look these people too, uh, you know, and I certainly, you know, if we get a better approach. I believe, I I'm not putting Chris down, he's in, he's in a best of person in a, in the city of God. But there is sometimes, you know, because due to COVID nineteen, you can now talk one on one. You cannot just have a public meeting, call everybody and tell you it. But when you give them all the opportunity, uh, then then you have to make a decision, you have to make a decision. But I I I I like to, I I I like to, you know, it is it is instead of this eighteen. It is easy next month, bring him back and and have to some kind of uh filter down. One thing we we talking about with the school, we need to talk to what a kind of filter down. Then need to talk to gain with all these people and also look up this other revenue new. Because we have to some kind of, I'm talking, I'm happy of some kind of compromise with these people in island. What kind of thing if we don't open something in a corner? And we still have that 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 project, I'm talking, this this project have to go. For these these developer, they spend a lot of money, and stab spent a lot of money. So I, you know, I'm talking about if the project already is 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 there. I like to bring back to more kind of filter in in the next month. Uh, I I believe we might, we will be in progress. And at this time, I'm not feel comfortable to move on that. Uh, go ahead, Mayor. Councilmember campaign.
I'm mute, Kurt. Kurt, you're muted.
Thank you, Chris. Um, I I kept hearing four access points. In fact, there are two access, really two, three access points if you count Cornell. Chase is not an access point. What you have in Creekside subdivision right now is a hundred and fifty unit subdivision, which is a cul-de-sac. You have one access in, and that is it. That to me has been and still is today, a significant safety issue. You have almost a hundred and fifty homes in there with one point of access, period, end of story. The secondary access, which you talk about Chase down to the south, only goes to the property next door. The property up to Glendale provides a secondary access. If by approving this, the sub, if you approve the project behind it. You will effectively reduce the 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 traffic load by fifty percent by opening up one additional access point. So I I I, rather than everyone funneling through to 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 Lincoln Way. You have then equal access going north up to Glendale. And and that's not even taking into consideration what people, if any, would use Cornell. And I understand what you're saying, Mister Mayor, about the the concerns that people have on on uh in the island. You know, they don't, they they don't wanna be annexed. And I hear that, and I've heard it for a number of years. And I understand their concerns. My biggest issue at this point today, tonight, is that the city. In essence, uh, didn't make a deal, but we offered to sell property to this developer. To be included as part of this subdivision. And now we're at a point where we don't wanna make a decision on the subdivision. Because of, I I think we've gotten this annexation interlaped with it. You know, I I I'm of the opinion that if we had two access points, which is Ranch Road and that up to Glendale. Approve the project. Not require the improvements on Cornell at this point, leave the issue of the annexation to a future discussion. I I think that that it would be beneficial to the city to the extent that. We have worked with this 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 developer for two years now. We're now at a point where they're expecting a decision. And it looks as though we wanna punt it, when in fact, we could bifurcate the project, approve the subdivision. Put the issue of the annexation off to, uh, you know, two weeks or three weeks, whatever you'd like, Mister Mayor. But I think the issues associated with that subdivision have been and are resolved. We listened to the attorney for the school district tonight. He said, he said, we have, if we. Cooperate, require the developer to work with him and the district, they're happy. The, and I think the the bigger issue is, is what Chris has brought up. People, and and it's, it's general, it's not, it's not bad, but people don't like change. That vacant land, that land has been vacant for years and years, even though it has been planned, it's been in the general plan. It is an infill project. By moving forward tonight, I think we demonstrate to the business community, and it's not just local, I'm talking about the development community. You know, you you don't go down this road for two years, get to the end and then decide, oh, I got some residents who don't like this, who live in the county. And maybe we need to kind of pull back and not do anything. I I think it's incumbent upon us to make a decision. Based on the facts that we have in front of us and what is best for this community as a whole, not looking at individual persons. So I I I I am reluctant at this point to push this off. When in fact, we know that this subdivision meets all the requirements of the general plan, provides additional safe uh emergency access. Uh, north to Cornell or north to Glendale. And if it, if we wanna put off the whole issue of of improvements to Cornell Road, I say we put it off to the annexation issue. That way, those people are not impacted. They talked about they don't want Cornell Road affected by in any fashion. Uh, and the subdivision gets, I mean, Mister Mayor, I I mean, does that ring? Something that would be workable?
Oh, councilmember campaign, I I totally understand your point of view. Uh, you know, I'm talking about certainly tonight is annexation is not gonna work. And I I say in the beginning, I I I'm favorable with the project. I I know these people. The only thing on a project, I I, you know, I I like to like in chase. I mean, there, there will be even know, and even even, you know, if they, if the change we don't connect. What was we know the benefit? They did two big exit, Glendale and 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 the Ranch Road. It it should be a plenty. And I I know it might be, they have to do something, uh. You know, something sturdy again, but it's that traffic is not that much can be, it's coming back to in 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 due to to exit.
Coming back and when?
No, I'm talking about F F F the chase, we are not gonna open the chase. It not gonna be that much effect on on the project. And I I I I'm happy with, you know, on that project.
Mayor Sandu, this is Bill Forrest. Uh, if I could speak to the issue of Chase Drive. Um, councilmember camping is correct. The connection to Chase is not a benefit. To the Fairway Oaks project is a benefit to the Creekside two, unit two project. In that Chase Drive is over six hundred feet long. And until the Fairway Oaks project was approved with a connection to Chase. The last two lots at the east end of Chase Drive had a temporary cul-de-sac. For fire department turnaround. And the fire department allowed those two. Lots to be built on and the temporary cul-de-sac to be built upon, knowing that Chase Drive would. Then continue on and connect to uh Fairway Oaks project.
No, no, but Ben, I I I do understand, but I'm talking with, there is a way. You know, there is a way, I I do understand the fire department, how long that the creek side be there, almost ten, fifteen year?
Yeah.
Right, Ben?
Correct. And and.
You know, I I I get it. I, you know, I I totally understand if we connected, this can be some of the benefit. But you also look at these sitting in too. I'm F F D D, and and this, this subdivision, we can, we can give without, if there is no other way. Yes, I I I I'm I'm agree with you, but if there is other way, then why we wanna make unhappy these people?
Well, I think if you, Mister Mayor, I think if you look at the general plan, the general plan has a single loaded street along. Uh, Dry Creek. And if you also look at the city's park master plan, it specifically calls out for a trail system. Along there and public access. Additionally, there is a wellhead located at the end of Chase that provide, that needs. Needs access. If you're going to serve the subdivision to the, to the east, which is the new Fairway Oaks. You're going to need streets in order to put your pipes in the ground, in order to find, in order to establish complete circulation for your water system. So you have a redundancy. So so you've, you, in in at least that, there was a wellhead there now or was. And and I assume it's still there, so that you end up having, you know, water pressure evenly distributed throughout the subdivision. But that street through Chase has been planned for over thirty years. That is not new. That's over thirty years old.
No, 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 I I do understand, there might be plan, because all the street, that's why they're leaving, they have a plan. But if the subdivision does not have any safety issue. And there is only one or two car, if you look up on this side, might be one car, maybe a whole day, one or two car going. If we keep them and does not open, I I don't, I don't see that much big difference.
Well, it isn't, it isn't, it is, that is the issue. It's the issue of fire. If you had a fire through there, you've only got one access road out and it's six hundred feet long, you're trapped. You're trapped. The fire department, when they approved that, it was on a conditional basis. Upon which that 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 street would go through and you would have, you wouldn't end up with this extra long cul-de-sac. The same thing went for the entire Creekside subdivision, because those streets are supposed to go through, instead of having a hundred and fifty unit cul-de-sac. Which Ranch Road is the only access point to that subdivision.
No, no, I I do understand, there are a lot of other subdivision, they have only one exit in and out.
No, not not in goal, not in goal. That is the only one like it in town.
All right, uh, uh, councilmember campaign, what you, can you tell me, explain to me one more time? You know, I will.
I would, I would.
I will, I will approve that, but I'm gonna keep a condition, if the fire department say we really need to, there's been open it. But I'm gonna keep the condition of that. Is is fair?
In terms of Chase?
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't have a problem with that, because.
Yeah, I will be fine, but come, welcome back, or they have some kind of letter, we we really need to open that. Then uh we go from there. So just, and I I'm talking about if you wanna, or or let me see, I I I'm in the favor of to prove the project. Not the annexation, and these three exit is okay. Except the change drive, if there is a issue with the fire department. And I'm 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 happy to make that motion tonight, night, and then in in the future, we will bring back that annex.
Mayor Sandu, if I could speak to the proviso condition about Chase Drive and our department approval. I turn your attention to a condition of approval D one, which is a standard condition from the fire department. And what it reads is dead end streets in excess of a hundred and fifty feet require emergency vehicle turnaround. So Chase Drive is well over a hundred and fifty feet. It does not have an emergency vehicle turnaround. That's the whole point of it being punched through and connecting the Fairway Oaks is to satisfy that condition of approval associated with fire departments' conditions of approval for subdivisions. So there's, with the development of those two lots, there's no place to put a turnaround. You know, people at the planning commission talked about not extending Chase Drive because there is a very large oak at the in front from the well site. And I get that people are trying to preserve that. But even a a cul-de-sac, adding a cul-de-sac ball would take out that oak tree. So it's a combination of satisfying this fire code of not having dead end streets in excess of a hundred and fifty feet without an emergency turnaround by punching Chase Drive through. So I don't think there's a need to add a a conditional provision about connecting Chase Drive because the fire department already has the condition.
Well, I I think for the purposes of what the mayor has requested, if he were to request a letter from the fire department simply restating that, I I I think the mayor should be
Just find the satisfaction and 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 then we we work on that.
I I would, I would agree with that. I think that's, you know, a simple request because I do think it's an important feature. And I want to thank Councilmember Campion for bringing that up. I want to make, I want to make a last pitch for including the annexation. I think I kind of see where it's going and perhaps I shouldn't. I just think this is an important feature of the project. And as I mentioned in my opening presentation, what what we learned from the last development is the uncertainty regarding Cornell was a disadvantage to home builders. Home builders brought that up as a reason to not build. But now the way we see Cornell, you know, and that's the the big issue is Cornell Drive and access to the subdivision. If it's built as is and the island remains part of the county and we can't have access to making sure the developer redoes and improves Cornell, what happens? Is the road shut off? And is it gated up at Lincoln? So no residents of the new subdivision can come in? I don't think they're able to do that. There is a prescriptive easement that makes it be open. So if we connect it to the city portion on the eastern side, that would still provide access in and out. The only, the only thing that would change is now the developer wouldn't be able to make improvements because they don't have the ability to go do that in the county. So I I'm, I implore the council to reconsider the annexation as part of the project. I'm going to give it one last push. I do think that everybody in that island benefits eventually. And again, to me, based on my experience with the project, it's really the development that is the sticking point for many there. And their desire or lack of desire to want to be in the city has just been a method to obtain the ability to not have development. So I'm convinced that without the annexation, it would make development tougher. And even if it was to come in and we had that access to Glen or from Cornell, what does Cornell look like? Anyway.
Yes, thanks a lot for, you know, that, but at this time, I'm very much reluctant to that annex this time. Yes, we have a lot of opportunity to bring back that project of the annexation. If we want to approve tonight, I I'm 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 with whatever.
Well, I think what what I would suggest, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor, is that we introduce the the well, one, we we adopt the resolution for the initial study and mitigated neck deck monitoring plan and reporting program for the project. That doesn't approve the annexation. That would approve, that's item number two, number three. Then I would suggest that we don't approve number four, which is approving the annexation, if that is your concern tonight. And that we approve number five, which does the rezone that needs to be accomplished for purposes of the subdivision.
But Councilmember Campion, we will remove the language that does the prezone in that ordinance for the island.
I I don't know the pre, the pre, prezone doesn't do anything. Well, it's not the annexation. I I I think the prezone is consistent with the general plan, and I think being consistent with the general plan makes
Prezone property that's not in the city.
Sure you can.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah. If it has a land use designation, you can prezone property. Absolutely.
I would be in in favor of that as well. I think it takes care of what we need to do tonight. But I I am just adamant that we need to bring back this annexation at a date certain. I would, I would prefer to do it the next meeting. And I I just want to point out that I think the next meeting is the last time we're going to have Mr. Arias as part of the the meeting. And so with his background, at least, you know, with this whole project over the last several several years, I think it's important to have. And I think there's some some benefit to to taking a look, a deeper look at the annexation, Mr. Mayor. I think you're you're in 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 some respects correct.
I agree, I agree.
Oh, I I I do understand, but let's tonight approve the subdivision and put that annex in the future.
Okay. I would like to make a motion then, if it's okay, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
I move, we approve the item number three, which is the mitigated neck deck monitoring reporting program for the project. Introduce and
Yeah, I'm sorry. We we should do those as separate motions. So the first would be to adopt the resolution for the MND, have a motion vote, and then proceed to the next item, introduce the resolution. I mean, to introduce ordinance.
Okay, so I would, I I make a motion to approve the MND and reporting system.
I will do second.
Item number three.
So motion moved by Councilmember Campion, second by me.
For yourself, Mayor Sandu, you can do that.
And just a reminder, you need three votes because it is a resolution that you would be adopting.
And Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion move at three two zero.
Next motion would be introduce ordinance proving the proposed re prezone of the annexation area to R one to R one A and rezone the Fairway Oaks tentative subdivision map to OS R one C, R one B to OS R one C P D.
Second. Vice Mayor, just a second.
Rich, you're you're on mute.
Yes. Yes, second.
Okay, motion by Councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passed by three two zero.
Next motion I would make is doc resolution approving the Fairway Oaks vesting tentative subdivision map in all conditions as stated.
If we could clarify, does that motion include that any of the conditions that we were discussing? One, it would include the condition that that does not contingent on the annexation, but I just wanted to confirm before you finish your motion and there's a second.
Oh, yeah, would, yeah, would, wouldn't require the annexation.
All right, in second.
I'll second.
Motion move by Councilmember Campion, second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passed with three two zero.
Mayor Sandu, before we move on to the next item, we do have a public comment from Addison Covert again. Would you like to hear him?
Yeah, can you go ahead?
Addison, you're
Thank you very much. I was just following you as closely as I possibly could. That was an excellent job working through a difficult issue. I just wanted to verify there was some specific direction that you all are making this evening with respect to this continued effort on the school funding issue?
Yes, I I assume that that was included.
I just wanted to clarify that point. Thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, so that was our understanding when I was asking for the clarification on the conditions that you were addressing the schools and the conditions that you had discussed earlier.
Okay.
Can I, are are we, before we leave this item, I I want to ask at what point in the future do we anticipate bringing this annexation piece of it back, at least for some more healthy discussion about it?
I think that that may need to be a motion by the council. So if you had a motion that you wanted to
Let me, let me see, I had, at this time, I don't feel comfortable, but certainly we will talk to the city manager and get back to something, so we cannot talk all three, but we certainly get the, you know, discussion on on that.
Okay, I just, it just I would, I would prefer to put a a a either a buy date on it. Because I think that we could very, I mean, just based on my conversation with as as late as this morning with one of the community members, I think we're closer than than Mr. Mayor than you think in terms of, you know, folks understanding and 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 we're taking care of their needs or at least their concerns. And so I would hate to hold that up and let it float away and not get readdressed. And and so
And so, you know, given the divergence of opinion at the council level right now relative to annexation, I think from the staff's perspective, it would be best if the council could try to settle when to bring that back right now by way of a of a motion, and it'll either pass or it'll fail. And you can go from there.
Yeah.
What, you know, I I I I kind of agree with with Rich that I think, you know, we we need to address it, you know, as soon as we can. But at the same time, you know, that you've got a level of comfort on those issues which you have concerns. I think by approving the project as we have, I think that puts some certainty to certain things as it relates to whether this project will go forward. And I think at that point, people may or may not change their position relative to what they want or don't want to see happen to Cornell Road. So hopefully, maybe staff and Chris, I don't know if you've got time, maybe you can reach out to some of the principals that have been involved and and see if there are changes in positions or other recommendations as it relates to that. And and that may make some difference. I I don't know, Mr. Mayor, but I certainly think it's worthwhile.
No, no, I I totally understand, but I'm talking about, I don't have no, you know, like in conflict of interest on 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 that annex, is is come to the annex or not, but is this time, I don't feel comfortable. I might be well next couple of weeks or or within a month, I will say, okay, bring them on on that. But I don't feel comfortable, we have to put a date on it, why we have to put that particularly on that date. I I would like to even open, but certainly we all are responsible person, including all the council member, myself, and and there will be a new city manager. So I don't feel comfortable to put a date on that. And I certainly, I, you know, I I think everybody can work with the best interest of the city.
Yeah, I know, absolutely. And I I the the you asked the question of why do we need to put a date on it? And and I would say because we have had many, many man, employee hours put into that piece of it. We've had a lot of work done. And, you know, the bottom line is, is it's at the end of the day, we choose not to annex. I don't have a problem with that. I just have a problem with going down this road for so long and our staff putting in all this time, working with developer, working with the community. Come, I mean, my conversation this morning was much more than I just don't approve of it. It was, you know, I don't approve of it. I recognize that at some point it's going to have to happen. And Chris, Irius has done a good job of addressing well over half of my needs or our concerns. I think that's movement. If if we just abandon it now, the benefits to the community as a whole and 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 quite honestly, the community there in the annexed area or or the 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 island area, we we lose out on that. And I and I just think that that's, that would be at least a travesty to not not follow through with this and and take a harder look at it. And again, at the end of the day, Mr. Mayor, if if we decide that we're, the annex is not appropriate, I'm, you know, I'm good with that. But I think that our folks have put in a lot of time and effort and just to abandon it because we're not comfortable. Sometimes being on the council is not comfortable. And, you know, we've all made hard decisions already since you and I have been on this council for certainly in the last eighteen months related to the budget. And so I I would just say that 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 would be my pitch to to at least do do it for, if nothing else, the staff and the community that have put a lot of time and energy, including our planning commission.
You know, Vice Mayor, thank you for, you know, I I totally understand the staff, especially Chris. He spent a lot of time on that. I respect him. That's not mean this is totally business decision. I respect Mr. Hagler, I respect all 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 the department. But there is, this decision tonight is 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 a business decision. And and I don't feel comfortable. That's not mean I'm I'm abandoning that any project. That's at this time, I don't feel comfortable. And I, as you know, I might be needing more research more than it might be bringing back next month, but I did not want to put a date tonight. Thank you.
Yeah, I I you know, not making a decision tonight is okay. I I I I don't see any harm in scheduling it at the next meeting, whether we discuss it or make a decision may or may not occur. But I don't, I I would rather see it appear on the agenda in in anticipation that maybe a resolution is met. And if there is a resolution and residents have changed their mind, I think it gives the council the opportunity as well as the public to to engage in a in a meaningful discussion to discuss these issues. So I I I think it's beneficial to have it scheduled, you know, on the next agenda and until such time is a decision is made.
To clarify, if there's interest in a motion to continue to a date certain, that is a a simple majority of the quorum vote, not the three votes that we were talking about that are required for resolutions and ordinances.
Well, I'd certainly like to have the mayor open to the idea because the ultimate decision requires his his approval as well.
Right, yeah, but 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 I'm talking about, you know, I I'm talking, I'm sort of, I I work with the best interest to the city. And I I I'm telling what is my power, I will try to bring this this, I'm not, I don't know, might be a different impression, but I'm not trying to get this not come back. I will bring it back with my authority to bring that back to the council. And I don't see for to put a date on on that agenda. And if you guys want to make a motion, it is a different story, but that's kind of And if you guys want to make a motion, it is a different story, but that's kind of thing. I'm, I'm gonna give you my opinion.
So my question is this, Mr. Mayor, if you, if you would be open to, if, if it's not the August 18th meeting, would you be open to having it at the first meeting in September? That would give us four weeks for, for Mr. Ryus, well, maybe not him the whole time, but, but certainly the ability to bring that back within that timeframe.
And one day that can be first meeting in September.
I don't have my calendar up. I apologize.
And we put the second third week of next one month. We can put on agenda.
September 15th is the.
The first is the first meeting, first Tuesday is September 1st or September 15th is the third.
That's September 15. You guys want to agree on that?
I would certainly agree to that. I, I think again, what we do lose out of that, and I just want to make the public comment that we lose the, the, the background and, and experience of Mr. Arias through this many, many years, the project that lasted many, many years. But I would be agreeable to that if that's the only date we can get it on the calendar. So I'd make a motion to continue the annexation piece of this project to September 15th.
Wow.
Yes, I will make a second. Mr. Campion, did you make a second?
No, I'll second that.
All right, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano, second by council member. Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye, motion passed by three two zero.
Mr. Mayor, I have a question on, I guess it would be the map and access. So I guess I just need a little clarification. So we, so the map was approved as is showing the four access points with clarification on.
With the condition to on chase, have we got a gets.
Right.
Out of from the file department there.
So will we, so I guess the clarity I need is what happens to, to Ranch Road? So if it doesn't include the island annexation and the developer does not have access to Cornell and we can't make improvements, what happens? So I.
No, they, they're gonna have a two exit, right? And Ranch Road and, and, and the Glendale.
My, my understanding, Chris, is that the conditions would stand as written. And that, you know, depending upon what happens in September, it may or may not come to fruition. If, if there is a condition that which is imposed upon the subdivision map, which the subdivider is unable to execute and the city is unwilling to execute, then that condition is waived. That's in accordance with subdivision map act.
Right.
So it's rights until it is determined to be completed or not.
Okay.
Thank you. All right, next agenda item G2. Subject. Northeast Gulf landscaping and lighting district. Mr. Sanning.
Good evening, Mayor and councilmembers. Tonight, as required by statute, is the place and time previously set on July 21st by the council to hold separate public hearings for each of the three lighting and landscaping districts administered by the city. You know, I should probably pause. Do we need to get our other two council members back in?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I would suggest we take like a two, three minute pause to get our balance of our council together. I forgot about them until.
Mr. Hagler, did you let them know?
I forgot about them until he started talking.
I will let Sean Farmer. And.
Yeah, I sent them a message.
Okay.
Thank you. I was just waiting for you to let me back in there, Rose. Thanks.
You're welcome.
So Councilmember Lamson's joined us too.
Yeah, was somebody talking? I can't hear anything.
Just want to make sure that yourself and Councilmember Farmer got back in before we moved on.
Yeah, they.
He's got it back.
They are.
Good, Mr. Sanning.
Okay, maybe just real quick to reiterate, tonight, as required by statute, is the place and time previously set by the council on July 21st to hold separate public hearings for each of the three lighting and landscaping districts administered by the city. State law requires the governing body for such districts to annually declare the intention to levy and collect assessments for properties within the district proportional to the benefit received. Mr. Bill Forrest of our public work staff will provide a brief presentation for each district with the respective public hearing to follow. That'll turn it over to Bill.
Thank you, Mr. Selling. Before you is a recommendation to receive the presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the Northeast Gulf landscaping and lighting district for fiscal year 2020 dash 21 and related engineers report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the Northeast Gulf landscaping and lighting district engineers report and levying of annual assessments for fiscal year 2020 dash 21. Next slide, please. This is a map actually of all three districts. The northeast area is the yellow golden rod section in the northeast corner of the property of, of the city. Next slide, please. I'm gonna have to amend this first bullet point. I stated there was no annexations or subdivision of existing parcels for this year. We did a test submittle to the county assessor and found actually one parcel needs to be dropped, which is the veranda parcel and then that their condition to annex into the new operation and maintenance CFD that was formed last month by the council. The assessments per parcel are fixed and have not changed since the district's inception in 1990. A typical assessment for a single family residential parcel range from $51.70 to $301.85, depending on what benefit zone they are within the northeast area. The northeast areas divided into, I believe, 15 benefit zones. There for the two districts that were formed in, in the 1990, the northeast, as well as you see in the west side, assessments have been fixed. And so with that, they have, the assessments have not kept up with costs and inflationary pressures and the northeast area per the adopted budget. The city's budget will receive a general fund subsidy of approximately $144,000 for fiscal year 2020 and dash 21 and then subsequent year fiscal year 2021 dash 22 of a subsidy of 229,880. Next slide, please. So that concludes my presentation. Just to reiterate, the recommendations, receive this presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the Northeast Gulf landscaping and lighting district for fiscal year 2020 dash 21 and related engineers report upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution with the small proviso of the second to the last, whereas where it states 300 3,237 parcels, that that be changed to 3,236 parcels. That's the only change recommended to the resolution. And, and with that resolution, leaving of the annual assessments for the fiscal year 2020, 21 will be in effect. And that concludes my presentation for the Northeast Gulf landscaping, lighting district. If anybody has any questions, feel free to entertain them.
Thank you, Bill. I would like to ask all the council member, if anybody have a, any comment and question, otherwise I'm gonna open the public hearing and close the public hearing, then we can have a turn to have a question or how the way you guys, or how the way council member wants I will do. Everybody agree on just open the public hearing? I would like to open the public hearing on this agenda item. Tina, any public comment?
No written public comment.
I don't know, is there is anybody raise hand or anyone?
I have no public comment or raised hands on the attendee side.
There is no public comment at this time, right?
Correct.
So I would like to close the public hearing. Then I can bring back that agenda item to the council member. Vice Mayor Lozano.
I, I just have one question for Bill. What would be the total per, I know it's here in the staff report, I just can't find it. The total per unit or per parcel that will be collected in this area?
For the northeast, the total?
Yeah, not, not total in some, but per parcel.
At the bottom of the first page. Basically ranges from about $51.70 Vice Mayor, up to $301.85. Is that accurate, Bill?
Yeah.
Okay.
If you're after an average per parcel, I would have to dig up the total and divide it.
That's okay. I just thought I saw a number in here. I still don't see the bottom of the first page. Oh, got it. Okay. No, thank you. Appreciate it.
Councilmember Campion.
I have no comments.
Councilmember Lansing.
No comments.
Councilmember Farmer.
Just a quick question, Bill. Are, are those numbers based on what the parcels have been valued at, like the same as taxes? Or how, how is the cost per parcel determined?
Approximately per the engineers report, the maximum assessment would have been $518 per acre. Given some of these were assessed back in 1990, I can't recreate that math, but per the engineers report for pretty much all benefit zones, the maximum assessment would have, could have been $518. Previous, previous, previously engineers reports established a budget for each of those special benefit districts and divided that budget by the number of parcels within that benefit zone. So that's how it used to be done in the old, if you will, in the olden days. But I, that's the best answer I can provide in terms.
I was just, I was just curious because it's a pretty broad range, $50 to, to 300. Something I was just curious if it was, you know, based on square footage, lot size, you know, proximity to, you know, parks or just timing, like one was assessed, you know, in 1990 and another was assessed in 2005.
A little bit of that, I, I would say mostly it related to the concept that, that each district established a budget. And then, and so that budget said, okay, we have landscaping in front. We have a park within a certain area or not. We have this number of streetlights. And so a, a maintenance budget was established for that, divided by the number of parcels within that benefit zone. And, and so that kind of explains the wide number between the various benefits. So I, I would say it's more because of a budget was established for the facilities that that benefit zone was responsible for.
All right. I, I just asked these questions because I get a lot of questions about lighting landscape districts from the public. It's still kind of a widely misunderstood thing, although it's really a kind of a simple concept. It's just, it's one people thing that I get a lot of inquiry about and people trying to understand what it is and and what it actually does and where the money goes and how it's all that. So I just trying to better, you know, let people that are watching know and, and for myself to better understand, to be able to address this question. So thank you for that.
The, the problem with these older lighting landscape districts is there was kind of a, a pre prop 218 level of review. And then there was the post prop 218, which essentially said you couldn't increase the budget without going to a vote. And then even subsequent to that, there have been recent court cases related to LNL districts and special benefit versus general benefit that had, if you will, even, even kind of more tweaked the lighting landscape district concept.
Okay.
Yeah, and if I just would add, it's basically proportional to the benefit received. And so as Bill touched on, you know, how close you are in proximity to a park or a streetlight or what the frontage is relative to landscaping that's included in the district. So those are the kinds of, of elements that will affect what that benefit is and then the proportional share of it.
So I was just thinking, just thinking out loud here, I, you know, maybe the, the more knowledgeable people are with this, the more this might create an issue where people would say, you know, well, hey, I pay the most because I'm closest to the park. So I want that park watered and mowed as much as possible. I think, I think as people better understand, well, hopefully, you know, in the future, you know, we can come up with a solution to resolve all this. I know this is like the elephant in the room, these LNL. So thank you, Mike, and thank you, Bill, for explaining that.
Thank you, Sean. My comment is just for the public. Mr. Selling, is that increased basically every year we do, right?
Correct. We basically, statute requires that the governing body pass a resolution for levying the assessments. And that's an annual thing that has to be done. Again, on these, well, two of these three anyway, the northeast and the west, there is no escalator tied to, you know, a COLA adjustment, if you will, or, or cost, you know, cost of living. So, but statute does require that we basically have to pass a resolution if we are to continue the assessments. if we are to continue the assessments, even though they're not being adjusted for inflation.
Thank you, Mike. Any council member, any other comment or question? If he's not, Tina, could you please read that recommended action for me?
Receive our presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District for fiscal year two thousand twenty through twenty one and related engineers' report and to upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Engineers Report and Living of Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty through twenty one.
Who we have a motion to approve that agenda item?
Yeah, I just have a quick, quick question. I'm sorry. For Ms. Do we have to take these individually or can we take them all at once?
We do them individually because they each have a separate public hearing.
No, I'm sorry. I was not clear. Each of the recommendations, do we?
Oh, yeah. So actually, the only action you need is to adopt the resolution because the other items are the opening of the public hearing, closing the public hearing. So all you need is the adopt a resolution approving the Northeast Galt Landscaping and Lighting District and Engineers. That's all one item.
Okay, got it. I make that motion.
Yeah, motion by Vice Mayor Lozano. Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano? Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton? Mayor Sandu?
Hi. Five to zero. Next agenda item is West Side Galt Lighting Landscaping and Maintenance District ninety two thousand. Mister Selling?
I'll let Mr. Forrest go ahead with the presentation.
Thank you. Next slide, please. The recommendation before you is to receive this presentation and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping and Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash zero two for fiscal year two thousand twenty dash twenty one and related engineers' report. And then upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash zero two engineers' report, leaving of annual assessments for fiscal year two thousand twenty dash twenty one. Next slide, please. On this map of the L N L districts, the west side is represented by the magenta color. It includes residential areas on the west side of Highway ninety nine. And actually does include two areas on the east side of Highway ninety nine. I just realized that, as well as including some parcels within the industrial area complex. Next slide, please. In this case, there were no annexations or subdivision of existing parcels for this year. Again, this is one of the districts where the assessments per parcel fixed and have not changed since the district's inception in nineteen ninety. Total assessment for a typical assessment for a single family residential parcel ranges from thirty six dollars sixty two cents to two hundred and twenty one dollars and eighty cents. Again, depending on which benefits zone the parcel lies within and the things of special benefit. This one, the west side receives a general fund subsidy for fiscal year two two thousand twenty dash twenty one of forty two thousand one hundred and twenty two dollars and the subsequent fiscal year of sixty five thousand and forty four dollars. Next slide, please. So that concludes the this presentation. Recommendation is open and conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash zero two for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty one and related engineers' report. And upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping, Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash zero two engineers' report and living of the annual assessments for this fiscal year. That concludes.
Now I would like to open the public hearing. Tina, there is any public comment?
No written comments.
Rose, there is anybody on the webinar?
Nope, we have no public comment on the Zoom.
All right, thank you. And now I would like to close the public hearing and bring back that agenda item to the council. Vice Mayor Lozano?
I have nothing.
Councilmember Campion?
Thank you.
Councilmember Lampton?
Thank you.
Councilmember Farmer?
No comments. Thank you.
And thank you. I don't have no comment either. So do we have? Tina, could you please do that recommendation action?
Adopt a resolution approving the West Side Galt Lighting, Landscaping and Maintenance District nineteen ninety dash zero two Engineers Report and Living of Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year twenty twenty through twenty one.
Thank you. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilmember Farmer?
Again.
Second by Councilmember Campion? Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion carry five to zero. Next agenda item is G four. The subject City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three Public Hearing Approving the Engineering Report Confirming the Assessment Diagram Assessment to Be Lit and annual assessment for fiscal year twenty twenty and twenty twenty one.
I'll jump. Sorry.
Oh, Mr. Bill?
I'll jump right to the recommendations, receive this presentation and at the conclusion, conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the City of Galt Landscaping Line District Number Three for fiscal year two thousand twenty dash twenty one and related engineers' report. Upon closing of the public hearing, adopt the resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three Engineers Report and living of annual assessments for fiscal year twenty twenty dash twenty one. Next slide, please. On this map, the district number three is the blue color. It was formed in two thousand and five with the Schmidt Ranch and the Creekside Two Unit Two subdivisions. We've had some subsequent annexations in years past, including some smaller parcel maps and development entitlements, Trailside Family Dollar, some parcel maps off of Poplar and Oak Avenue. Next slide, please. For this fiscal year, there were no annexations or subdivisions of existing parcels for this year. This district does have a C P I inflator built in. And so the assessment per parcel can be adjusted by the C P I. The L N L district sets a minimum increase at one point five for this particular index, which was from January of twenty nineteen to January of twenty twenty. The C P I increased by two point nine percent. The proposed assessment for a single family residence parcel is three hundred and forty seven dollars and twenty eight cents, which is represents a nine dollars and eighty cent annual increase from last year's assessment for a single family residential parcel. For this per the budget for this fiscal year and next expenditures are projected to exceed revenues. But we have built up a reserve and and so this district will stay in the black for the this fiscal year and the subsequent fiscal year. Next slide, please. So that concludes the presentations. So the recommendation is conduct a public hearing regarding the levy of proposed assessments for the City of Galt Landscaping and Lighting District Number Three for fiscal year two thousand twenty dash twenty one and the related engineers' report. And then upon closing of the public hearing, adopt a resolution approving the City of Galt Landscaping and Lightning District Number Three Engineers Report and Living of Annual Assessments for Fiscal Year two thousand twenty dash twenty one. I'm available for any questions.
Thank you, Bill. I would, I would like to open the public here. Tina, there's any public comment?
No written comments.
You know, is there anybody on?
I have no public comment on Zoom.
So there is no public comment and I would like to close the public hearing. Councilmember, any council member, anybody, any comment, any question? Please raise your hand. If there was, if there is no question or any comment, then I would like to entertain a motion.
Moved. Thank you.
Motion moved by Councilmember Campion. And second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion carry with five to zero. All right, next agenda item, regular calendar. Treasury report.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was gonna have a twenty minute discussion about interest rates. But in case, in case you didn't want to sit through that, I'll sum it up this way. For for municipalities and for a municipal treasurer, interest rates suck. Okay, I'll give you some examples. The today, the three month treasury bill was point zero nine percent. And a five year treasury note is point one nine percent. So if you want to invest for five years of point one nine, you can. So, but I'll tell you that what you have before you is the treasurer's report for June two thousand or twenty twenty. And we, as the city, for June, received an interest rate return of one point two eight percent. Now, the majority of our funds right now is in is in life. And the reason is because they have the highest rate. In June, they they were able to provide one point two two percent. And I will tell you that is dropping fast because just in the month of July, that rate has already gone down one quarter of one percent. So it's now below one percent as far as what life is providing. And this is the this is the meeting where I always provide the interest earned for at the end of the fiscal year. So for the fiscal year ending twenty twenty, June twenty twenty, the city earned one million three hundred and forty eight thousand five hundred ninety eight dollars and eighty four cents. Now, with interest rates dropping so drastically, I will tell you that for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, we are going to be fortunate if we get half of that. So I'm predicting right around six hundred thousand as far as total interest. So with that, I'll keep it brief tonight and I'll ask for council, ask for your approval for the treasurer's report ending June twenty twenty.
Thanks for the the raw assessment there, Sean.
You're more than happy.
You just pull that out and put it in like a like a coffee can until the rates go back up and then we'll put it back in so we can miss the downfall.
Yeah, I wish.
Any other council member have any comment, any question? Any public comment?
No public comment.
Rose?
No public comment on the Zoom side.
Thank you. If there's no other comment, please accept the treasure report as merit. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Farmer. Second by Vice Mayor Lozano. Tina may have a roll call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano?
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer?
Aye.
Councilmember Campion?
Aye.
Councilmember Lampton?
Aye.
Mayor Sandu?
Aye. Motion passes by five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Sean. Next and item is City Manager's Office. Subject Appointment of City Manager and Approval of Compliance Agreement with Lorenzo Hein Jr. Mister Hagland. Yeah. Yeah, mute.
Sorry about that. Mayor Sandu, members of the council, the item before you is for consideration is an employment agreement with Lorenzo Heinz Jr. for the position of city manager. Included in the packet is the entirety of the employment agreement. As the council is aware, the council has conducted a nationwide search for this position. We've conducted two searches in total and the obviously, the final search met with excellent group of candidates with the council centering on Mr. Heinz as the preferred choice of those candidates. The council met with all of the candidates in both recruitments a number of times, as well as in both recruitments utilized a panel made up of members of the community who separately met with the the candidates themselves. And then in addition to that, met in this last recruitment effort with the city council to provide their input relative to the individuals that they interviewed. Again, the council coalesced around Mr. Heinz identifying his twenty seven years of experience, both currently in California with the City of Pacifica as an assistant city manager, but moreover, with the City of Edmonds, Washington and Lenwood, Washington, where Mr. Heinz served in the position of finance director. Mr. Heinz also has previous experience with the state of California, in particular, the Secretary of State's office as chief financial officer, as well as with the Seattle King County Public Health Department in Seattle, Washington. Mr. Heinz's financial experience includes financial strategy and management expertise, including financial turnarounds, budgets and forecasting. In particular, and of interest is the fact that Mr. Heinz himself is a certified public accountant, has taught courses in preparing people for the C P I. people for the CPA exam itself. And so his financial acumen is wide ranging. In the employment agreement that I referred to a few minutes ago, there are a couple items, the initial salary that the city will hire Mr. Heinz at is a hundred and ninety five thousand dollars per year. There are other employment related benefits that are included as exhibit A in the employment agreement, which is attached to the staff report. And that does include a three hundred dollar a month car allowance. The agreement contains an initial term of four years with a one year option to extend the agreement with Mr. Heinz. And his employment is slated to begin under the agreement on August thirty first. The total cost of the employment agreement, including salary and the related benefits, not including retirement, is two hundred and fourteen thousand ninety dollars. And that does include one time moving expenses of up to five thousand dollars. The retirement costs are shared equally between the employee and the city and are budgeted separately. With that, I would be happy to answer any specific questions that the council may have relative to the employment agreement itself. Any of the benefits identified in exhibit A or exhibit or also answer questions relative to exhibit B, which does not have a financial implication, but wisely includes the ICMA Code of Ethics. ICMA is the International City Managers Association and Mr. Heinz is a member of the ICMA, as was I during my active tenure as a city manager. And Mr. Heinz is also a member. As we highlight here, he's a credentialed city manager with that credentialing coming from ICMA itself. And so with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, Mr. Hagland.
I, Mr. Mayor, I would also like to say that we also have Mr. Heinz with us tonight. So if you have any questions of him or would like to offer him the opportunity to speak, that is perfectly fine.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Mr. Hagland, the only, you know, I don't have no question. The only thing I have a comment because we went through all the search and we find a best qualified person to do that job. And I have no doubt in my mind, he, he have all the knowledge, he have all what we were looking for, the city. And I believe he will lead in this city. And that's comment, after that, I would like to turn on to the other council member. Vice Mayor Lozano, you want to make any comment, any question?
Yeah, I, I, I think it would be a good idea to hear from Mr. Heinz as well. And then ask for any public comment as well. But I just want to point out that, you know, this has been a long and arduous process, you know, this is, as Mr. Hagland pointed out. We, we did two searches and after the first search went back out and, and I, and I truly believe we did find the, the right person for Galt. In, in all aspects, I kind of joked with someone and I, I'm just gonna say it publicly because Mr. Heinz is, is here as well, but you know, to find somebody that's CPA that has a great personality is kind of an oxymoron sometimes, you know, and I don't mean to be offensive, but, but it just is, it's just it was the perfect match. I think that somebody that, that really had, has that ability to bring people together. I also want to point out for the public that your council decided to do an independent background investigation outside of the the, the investigation is done by the recruiter. We, we hired an outside investigator as well. And I'll tell you that without getting into detail, obviously, because it's personnel issue, we, what we saw in the interviews is I think what we got. And, and that was my, my, my concern is making sure the person that was in front of us for probably no more than three hours of time was really who we got in terms of the outcome of the background investigation. We have somebody of high moral character that embraces community and, and those are two of the main penance that we were looking for, tennis we were looking for in, in someone that has, that, that we wanted to bring on, be the CEO of our organization and city. So I, I will leave it with that. I, I don't want to go on too long, but I just want to welcome Mr. Heinz in the, in the near future and, and go from there. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion. Councilmember Campion.
Yes, I was trying to get off mute there. No, I just want to welcome Mr. Heinz on board. I think I feel like the other council members, he was the right person, the right fit. And I look forward to working with him with him and good things forward for the community. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson.
Yes, good evening. Hopefully Mr. Heinz is there. I'm not, he's not moving very much. I just want to say how excited I am for him to come on board. It's been a, a long, long process for the city council and we were very, very fortunate to have Mr. Hagland with so much knowledge, step forward and take over the reins longer than he thought he was going to have to. But we're excited. The department has wanted a strong leader and I really believe they're getting a strong leader out of you and be careful what you ask for. And I just have one question for you. After tonight's meeting, you're still coming, right?
Yes, I am.
I missed most of it. I was recused, but anyway. Thank you.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, that was funny. Yeah, I just want to thank you, Lorenzo. As some of the other council members said, you know, we, we went through this process twice, you know, we just couldn't, couldn't come to agreement first go around and and so we all very much you know, liked what we saw in you and you know, Mr. Hagland, you know, talked deeply about your, your financial accolades, but and, and that was really kind of, that kind of was something that really kind of rose to the top of something that was very important because of our financial situations and, and the things we've been having to try to, you know, deal with since some of us came on to council and last two years, but, but you know, I, I feel like, you know, what was always important to us as well. And, and me personally was you know, your community involvement and such. And so, you know, in your interviews, some of those things really stood out to me. Some of your comments with, you know, your your embracing of the Chamber of Commerce businesses, you know, you just just really personable. And I, and I explained to a lot of people when they would inquire, you know, what's the new city manager like? You know, what can you tell me about him? And I would just say, look, he's, he seems like a real personable guy. I mean, he's just relatable. I feel like, you know, he's approachable. I, I feel like he's gonna really assimilate into our small community, you know, because we really are a small town and I know you came from Pacifica, which is also small, but, but, but different in ways. And so I just, you know, I feel good about, you know, hiring you. I think you're gonna be great. I look forward to sitting down with you and, and, you know, and, and and the council does, all of us to talk about, you know, some of our goals moving forward. And so can't wait to see you hit the gun running. And I hope the staff is scared by the comment about you being a strong leader. You're a strong leader. I'm not gonna scare you. Lorenzo is a cool guy and I think, I think you guys are all gonna really work well for him and, and, and I'm looking forward to it. So again, welcome Lorenzo and look forward to seeing you in a couple of weeks or actually, what is it? Yeah, three weeks.
So Mr. Heinz. Congratulations and welcome to City of Galt. Now you have the opportunity to speak with the council, anything you want to, or speak to the public.
Well, can you all hear me?
Yes.
Very good. Too bad we missed the twenty minute dissertation on interest rates. That would have been scintillating. So Mayor Sandu, Vice Mayor Lozano, Councilmember Campion, Councilmember Lamson and Councilmember Farmer. I just wanted to let you all know that it's an honor to service your, your next city manager. I express my sincere gratitude for you all giving me this great opportunity. I'm looking forward to working with the citizens of Galt and you all as the council and also the staff and helping the city accomplish its goals and objectives and move to a prosperous future. So I am really excited right now and looking forward to getting there on the thirty first and rolling my sleeves up and getting to work. So. But, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Heinz. He's your end of the month.
Yes.
Tina, we, did we have any public comment?
We do have public comment from Randy Morton, Galt Fitness Pro, Galt City Council on behalf of businesses in Galt as well as the Galt USA members. We thank you. I look forward to Mr. Heinz's leadership in our great American town.
Thank you. Rose, do we have anybody on a Zoom webinar?
We have no public.
Thank you. Councilmember, last chance to make any comment on the new city manager. If he's not, Tina, please, can you read that recommended action?
Adopt a resolution approving the employment agreement with Lorenzo Heinz Junior, appointing him city manager effective August thirty first, twenty twenty and authorizing the mayor to execute the employment agreement on behalf of the city.
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Vice Mayor Lozano. Second by Councilmember Lamson, Councilmember Lamson. Tina may have a rule call vote, please.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Yes.
Councilmember Campion.
An enthusiastic yes.
Councilmember Lamson.
Heck, yes.
Mayor Sandu.
Yes, yes. Motion passed by five to zero. Again, Mr. Heinz, congratulations. He's your end of the month.
Congratulations, Lorenzo.
Congratulations.
Looking forward to working with you all. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Okay.
All right, moving along, the next agenda item is Mr. Hagland update on coronavirus.
Thank you, Mayor Sandu, members of the council. This update follows the the, 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 the last public update or last update provided at your July twenty first meeting, I should say. I periodically update you during the week relative to any particular issues that come up or statistics provided by the county. Today Sacramento is count, report Sacramento County is reporting ten thousand, one hundred and seventy four infections. And, and that is up nearly twenty five hundred from two weeks ago. They're reporting ninety six deaths. That's up approximately, I think fifty two from two weeks ago. Galt is reporting three hundred and ninety six infections. That's up about eighty nine from two weeks ago. And unfortunately, Galt now reports four deaths. We had zero deaths two weeks ago. San Joaquin County is reporting eleven thousand, nine hundred and fifty eight infections. Two weeks ago, they were reporting eighty seven hundred infections. And they are today reporting a hundred and eighty deaths. Two weeks ago, they had ninety five deaths. So we see or are continuing to see, I should say, an impact both in the number of infections, which has increased very significantly over the last two weeks as, as well as in the number of deaths. The city and county of Sacramento are working on free COVID nineteen testing that would occur once a week in Galt at the Parks and Recreation Department at six ten Chaboya Avenue. Testing is limited to people who are not experiencing symptoms and will be conducted on Thursday mornings only between ten AM or excuse me, between eight AM and twelve PM. Appointments must be made in advance in order to have a test at the Parks and Rec Office. The testing, as I've indicated previously, that the council is being conducted by staff from the University of California Davis. Individuals interested in receiving a test can make an appointment by going online to galt seven six six seven dot setmore, S E T M O R E dot com. And there is more information on the city's Facebook page with the how to schedule an appointment. The governor imposed certain actions on July thirteen, which reimposed various restrictions on certain business sectors in the state of California and in more than thirty counties in the state of California. Anyway, those types of restrictions remain in place. Restaurants in particular, along with gyms and other types of businesses are to remain closed for indoor activities or indoor dining, but may be able to effectuate their activities outdoors so long as they follow the guidance that has been put out by the state of California for doing so. The governor the other day, yesterday, in indicated that since July thirteen, they have seen a very slight improvement in the numbers and he credits that with the reimposition of some of these restrictions. He doesn't want to do those restrictions, but feels that it's in the best interest of Californians. And so they have reimposed those. But he also indicates that it will be several more weeks before we will know the true effect of the reimposition of those restrictions and whether or not additional restrictions will need to be imposed in order to keep the virus in check and to limit or reduce the, the, the spread of Corona, of coronavirus COVID nineteen. The counties on the state watch list include Sacramento and San Joaquin. And in Sacramento County that Galt resides in, we are providing distance learning for the schools at the start of the, the school year. Any county on the watch list, the state watch list needs to provide for distance learning as opposed to classroom learning. And so that affects some of our programs. The city and the school district met and have determined that under the current restrictions provided for by the state and the county, that we are going to be unable to provide some of our, well, our, any of our after school programs for the foreseeable future, certainly until the restrictions are somehow lifted. And, and so the city and the district agreed to meet on a monthly basis to continue to monitor that month by month so that we can make determinations as quickly as possible when we might be able to reactivate those after school programs. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the council might have.
Thank you, Mr. Hagland. Councilmember, anybody, any question?
Um, Tom, I'm getting a little bit of questions. I already talked to you about it, but maybe the communication committee wanting to clean because they are a city committee. What's the status on them and the youth commission picking up garbage and cleaning the streets?
Yeah, and that's something as I indicated to you yesterday that, that we'll take a look at in terms of the both the governor's order and the, the, the county's order. What we're broadly governed by is the fact that any sort of group gatherings, both public and private, are prohibited under the current state order. And so we'll look at the, to see if there's any sort of nuance to that, but the, 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 the the broad order does, at least at this time, appear to apply. And so as I indicated, we'll, we'll take a look at that and be able to provide a more well rounded response.
Thank you. Anybody, any comment, any question? Thank you. Anybody, any comment, any question? If he's not, I'm going to move the next agenda item. H four Police Department Sacramento Regional Radio Communication System ten-year license agreement. Chief Sackman. Cannot hear.
It's always better if you're on me, so. Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have Lieutenant Kowalski. He is still here. It's Project Falls under his division, so I'm going to turn it over to Lieutenant Kowalski.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Before you is a ten-year licensing agreement with Sacramento County Regional Radio Program that the city of Galt joined in two thousand and nine and ultimately executed a ten-year agreement in two thousand and ten that ran through June thirtieth of this year. This proposal runs from July first of this year until June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty nine. And the funds for this program enable us to participate in countywide communications across jurisdictional boundaries during emergency situations. And of course, allow us to conduct our police radio communications within the community. Funds for this program are already budgeted in our budget and are offset by a second year grant, second year of a two-year grant that we received through Sacramento County. There are no, from the last ten-year program and this ten-year proposed licensing agreement, there are no significant changes and we're only contract language cleanup and grammatical adjustments that were made in this document. So with that, I submit this to the council for approval for the next ten years.
Thank you. Council member, any comment, any discussion on this item? If there is no discussion, no comment, any public comment?
No public comment.
There's no public comment?
No.
Rose, there is anybody on a webinar Zoom?
There is no public comment on Zoom.
All right. Then recommended action adopted resolution approving the ten-year license agreement with the Sacramento Regional Radio Program, authorizing the city manager to execute the agreement using existing budgeted funds. Do we have a motion to approve that agenda item?
They're moved.
Motion moved by Vice Mayor.
Second.
Vice Mayor Lozano, second by Councilmember Farmer. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
Aye.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed by five to zero. Next agenda item, communication. There is Tina, any communication?
And no, not tonight.
Thank you. Comments by staff. Mr. Haglund, can you take care of that if you can, please?
Certainly. We'll start with Chief Sackman.
No, nothing from the police farm tonight, I think.
Okay. Mr. Arias.
Yeah, I'd like to make one last plea for the annexation. Actually, I'm kidding. I would like to congratulate Mr. Heinz on his appointment. I regret that I will not be here when you start. Based on what I've heard and your resume, I think you're going to do great for Galt. And I'm really excited that you're going to be the next city manager. So congratulations and good luck.
Claire, Ms. Tyson, our finance director.
Welcome, Mr. Heinz. I have nothing further to report.
Ms. Mendez, economic development.
Good evening. I just wanted to follow up on Tom's update regarding the COVID closures for the businesses in that we've been working, I shouldn't say we, Chris's staff has actually been handling this. But we're out doing some outreach right now with the nail salons. We've had quite a few that have contacted us wanting to move some of their operations outdoors. So the planning department has been taking those reviews and working with those businesses. So hopefully, we can get them at least somewhat operational until they're open indoors. So and with that, just welcome to Mr. Heinz. Excited to be working with you.
Amy, maybe so at the last meeting, one of the things that the council approved was an urgency ordinance for outdoor dining. So it's very difficult for restaurants who have to close to indoor operations. How has the outdoor dining ordinance been received by the the restaurants in town? Can you comment on that a little bit?
So far, we have been in contact and working with Los Esly tests. Papa's and Wings had submitted a request to their property owner for approval. And Denny's, today I had stopped in to talk to to give my business card to to make contact there. They had seating outside already, so we just want to make sure that they're in compliance and just get the application approved with regard to kind of the setup for outside. Also talked with El Rodeo, trying to assist them to get some outdoor operations. You know, it's really tough right now. Takeout and delivery isn't really cutting it for these restaurants. And so it's important for us to be able to help them. And we're still working with SHRA to see if there's some funding that we could potentially provide to them to help offset the costs that, you know, it's going to be to put up shade structures. And you know, right now with how warm it's been to make it bearable outside. But I think that for the most part, it's the process that, you know, for us just getting the word out to the businesses and getting the property owner approval and collecting the insurance documentation that we're going to need so that we can get the actual application approved. So.
Appreciate that. Thank you very much.
No problem.
Public Works Director.
Yeah, just a quick blurb. You know, a lot of folks may have been aware that our Chabola bus shelter got taken out by an errant vehicle, I believe, last fall. And we recently got the remainder of the parts we're waiting on in. And our staff has rebuilt it, so that structure is back up and and available for use. And then I too would like to welcome Mr. Heinz. Look forward to working with you. Congratulations.
Mr. Solis, Parks and Recreation.
Yeah, I'd like to let our citizens know that they can also call our Parks and Rec office if they have any questions about the testing. I'd like to also thank my staff who are working with the public currently, our aquatic center, our SOAR program and our market staff that are are out there every week working with the public. And I'd like to welcome Lorenzo. I really look forward to working with you. And I truly hope you're my last city manager.
Thank you, Amanda. Ms. Van Stein, Human Resources.
No specific department updates this evening, but of course, I'd also like to welcome Mr. Heinz to the city of Galt. We're excited that you're going to be joining us.
Very good. And city clerk.
I'd also like to reiterate congratulations to Mr. Heinz, and I look forward to working with you.
City attorney, Ms. Hood.
Congratulations and welcome to Mr. Heinz. I do not have anything further.
All right. I think that concludes staff comments, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Haglund. Our next agenda item is comment by city council. Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, I I just have a quick question. You know, Ms. Roderick is always on here with us and we never ask her if she has anything to say. So Rose, do you have anything to, anything to say?
Thank you very much. No, I do not have anything to say tonight.
Well, you never know. You're here.
To the new city manager Lorenzo Heinz, I look forward to also working with you here in the clerk's office. So thank you.
You've been with us quite a bit and and so I thought I'd offer that up. I don't know if I can, but I already did. So I I just have a couple of things to speak to. We got I got an email this last week in regards to some maybe different use of the market grounds temporarily. And I spoke with Mr. Haglund and and forwarded the information to Mr. Solis in regards to maybe some kind of outdoor movie kind of drive-in movie kind of thing. And I don't know if it's possible, but it was a great idea that came from one of our committee members in 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 the city. And so we're going to at least look at that, see what we can't do or what we can do to to maybe bring something to the market grounds during this this time. And maybe even have small group, you know, gatherings out there that that don't require, you know, that are still a part of the the state mandate. And so I just wanted to bring that up. And I appreciate Mr. Solis already. He was already on something down along that vein and responded pretty quickly today to me on that. So thank you, Mr. Solis, for that. And then one last thing I just want to comment about is I've received several comments and and concerns from the community just in the last couple of weeks in regards to the railroad track issue. And Mr. Haglund has been working with staff on this and and working with the railroad. There's quite a few people out on the east side of town. We're used to, you know, a train running on that spur that goes out to Ione from the main line, you know, once or twice a week. And it was usually on a Sunday morning. It would pass through at like seven and then pass back through three in the afternoon. Really wasn't disruptive at all to to the community. And 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 here lately, the last, I don't know, two or three months, it's been running through town about ten thirty, eleven o'clock at night. And then it comes back through about three in the morning and it's it's pretty loud. And as you know, they have, they're required to blow the whistle. And if you think about that spur line, I mean, it crosses like through five, four or five major roadways through our city. And and at that time in the morning, you can hear it, no matter which ones it's crossing. So it seems like the horn's blowing forever. So I did receive an email and a telephone call from another community member. And then I've noticed it myself. And so Mr. Haglund's been, like I said, working with the railroad with staff. And and I just would like to see if if somebody could just comment on where we're at. We just recently got some information from the railroad. And and I'll follow up also with the folks that have reached out to me. But I think it's important for for us to have a an understanding of of what, you know, what our jurisdiction is and what we can do to work with the railroad.
Sure. So we have breached out to the the railroad. This is a spur line off the main line and it's not often used. The train that you're talking about right now is passes by three times a week, Monday, Wednesday, Friday. It's taking raw materials to a specific customer of the railroad that has contracted with the railroad for delivery at those times. And and so so long as the railroad is obviously operating, they're they're independent of our jurisdiction first and foremost. And and so they really are overseen by the National Railroad Administration. And so long as they're operating in conformance with the use of the railway for under the terms of of the law, then, you know, they they're going to set up and and try to serve their customers the way their customers need to be serviced. And so the railroad did respond back to the city, indicated that the they were meeting particular customers' needs and that they anticipated that this would last, this this three-day-a-week would last up until approximately October.
And again, Mr. Haglund and staff, I appreciate you reaching out to the railroad and getting that information. You know, it is, again, for those like on the northeast side, it's and even even on the west side, you know, from from the main line on, it probably can hear it quite a bit. And so it's just, just, I think, I think at this point, we'd be as patient as we can and and just understand that at some point, it's going to come through. And and like I said, it's been somewhat disruptive. I I don't wake up for much and it's 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 woken me up a few times. So anyhow, I thank you for the response and and reaching out.
Mr. Haglund, I just piggyback on that. I I do have the same problem. I'm I'm a vice mayor's neighbor. So I'm not becoming, want to become the complainer, but it is, yes, it did have a big problem. Thank you. Council member Campion.
Council member Campion's battery went out, so he he has exited the meeting.
Council member Lamson.
Yes, those of us on the east side hear the train all day, every day, sometimes in the middle of the night. So.
More than forty a day.
Lock it up, buttercups. Also, Rich, you stole, you stole my thunder. If you were, I was, if you were watching the youth commission meeting last night, that's one thing the youth commission was thinking about taking on. And I I was going to text Armando to get an appointment with Jackie so we could zoom with her and see if the youth commission could promote a movie night. Is that who talked to you was Clot?
Yeah, it was somebody from the youth, yeah, youth commission.
But we discussed it at length last night and we're going to form a subcommittee and a committee and hopefully work with Armando or Jackie, right? Because we would work with Jackie, correct? Armando? Not. No nodding. Anyway, so that's.
Yeah, I've I've already, we actually, we actually talked to Lisa last week. She does an email. We'd already had something kind of planned. We're in the preliminary phases of a movie trunk-or-treat night that we're working on. So obviously, we can't have our our Halloween event like we did last year. So we were already working on that. So I've already directed Jackie to work with Lisa and the youth committee and hoping to partner with that event, with them on that event.
Okay, thank you. I'll get with Jackie then because we're going to work on a Zoom that doesn't break the brown act. We can only have not a majority. Anyway, all right, that's all. It's been long enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
And Lorenzo, I did my my sunset in with you, but I took this picture.
Council member Farmer.
Yeah, on an important note, I just want to thank Amy Mendez and Chris and his staff for working with businesses like you guys described it. I I think it's important that that under these mandates that the city is very proactive with trying to see how we can be assistance to to find ways that our businesses can function under and be in compliance. And I I read an article today about restaurants, how food costs are going like way up because of supply, demand and delivery and such. So you're having restaurants, their their food costs are going way, way up, steak and 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 other, you know, staples of of meals. And so they're, so it's like a double whammy, you know, they're only operating on a takeout basis, which is, you know, like, like one, you know, with one arm behind your back. And then they have these these costs skyrocketing. And then there's other businesses that are suffering from keeping staff on hand because people just don't want to come to work because of the, you know, what they make on the unemployment benefit and stuff. So this is, it's like a triple whammy for them. And so I appreciate anything that we can do. So I appreciate you, Amy, what you're doing and and Chris. Anything you guys can do is is helpful. So and then so that's on a non-serious note. I was noticing Lorenzo's background over there. It's a nice bridge. But we really got to get you something that's, you know, more like in line with a small town. So for you train complainers, I got a train up there for you. Great American little town. Welcome, Lorenzo, to the great American little town. And if Rich or whoever, Rich, if Mr. Mayor, if you guys want to borrow this background with the train, you're welcome. Just let me know. I'll send it over to you. That's all I have.
Thank you, Council member Farmer. I'm going to keep very short, quick comment. First of all, again, congratulations, Mr. Heinz, to welcome to city of God. On the second thing, I really appreciate all the staff. They're working really hard, especially due to this pandemic, due to this virus. And the third thing, I'd like to remind everybody, we keep a. we keep a social distance. This is very important during this pandemic. And stay safe. And I know it was long, almost 10:30. Again, thank you for everybody's patience, as the staff or councilman. If anybody have any question, if not, I'm going to adjourn the meeting. Thank you.
Night.
Good night.
Good night.
Tina, please read the replay and statement, please.
The meeting of the Galt City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Friday, August 7th at 9:00 a.m. and Saturday, August 8th at 9:00 a.m. A DVD copy is available for checkout from any library branch.
Thank you, Tina. Next-gen item, so, any approval, addition or deletion? If he's not, then next-gen item is a presentation. We have a two presentation. Public Safety Committee Annual Report to the City Council Chief Stockman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I, I'm, this is our annual Public Safety Presentation to cover fiscal year 1920. And Lieutenant Kowalski is present. He will be doing the presentation for the Chair of the Public Safety Committee and for the President.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members. I'm here tonight to present the 2019-2020 Public Safety Committee Annual Report. During the year, we had three out of six scheduled meetings occur. And those were in July, September, January. And then there were three remaining meetings. One was canceled due to lack of agenda items around the holidays. And unfortunately, due to the COVID-19 pandemic, the last two meetings of 1920 were canceled. However, starting in July, we resumed those Public Safety Committee meetings via Zoom like we are tonight. As many of you know, the purpose and the function of the Public Safety Committee is to act as an advisory committee to the City Council and evaluate any public safety issues within the community, brought to the committee's attention by the City Council, city staff, or residents, and then ultimately make recommendations to the City Council. The committee consists of seven members of the community. Two of them are council members currently, Mayor Sandu and Councilmember Farmer. Councilmember Farmer serves as the Chair, the Vice Chair being Randy Shelton. In addition, we have Darren Mitchell, Chris, Chris Chamber, Jer Shamber, Theresa McCord, and Richard Tellier also on the committee. Other participants which are non-voting members include the Chief of Police or Designee, Public Works Director Designee, the Fire Department, Parks and Recs as needed, and then our Staff Liaison. Many of the items discussed this year were surrounding traffic issues. The, our annual report, which I'm presenting tonight, our Emergency Operations Plan, and other community events that occurred prior to the COVID-19 pandemic. I'm happy to answer any questions, but that would conclude this year's presentation. Thank you.
Mr. Kowalski, first of all, thank you for, you know, bringing that report to us. And I know the last couple of meeting we cannot do to COVID-19. I think last meeting we did. And hopefully, you know, in the future, if the situation will not change, we should be doing better. Thank you for everybody on the Safety Committee meeting or Safety Committee members. They gave me a lot of time, you know, working with me. Thank you. Other council member? Any comment? Good Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate the opportunity to speak here real quick. I just want to thank the members for their participation. I was able to attend, I think, one of the meetings in, in this year. And certainly, the last meeting that was, that, that, that they had via Zoom. And, and so I think it's a good, a good group, a good, a good group of people who, who want to bring stuff forward for consideration to improve our community. So, thank you to the, my colleagues that serve on the committee. And thank you to all of our committee members that are participating.
Thank you. Anybody else want to make any comment? All right, we're gonna move along. The next presentation is proclamation for Doris Louise, Mr. Hagland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Good evening. This is a proclamation that was requested by the Galt Area Historical Society in recognition of Doris Louise Dowdell, who has been a longtime member of the community, she's about to turn 103. And the, what was one of the charter members founding the Galt Area Historical Society itself. And so, based on information provided to us by the Historical Society, we worked up a proclamation for council's consideration. And I'll just quickly read it here for our listeners at home. Whereas Doris Louise Dowdell was born on August 15th, 1918, in the Galt area. Whereas Louise and her brother Carl attended grammar school for a time at the Brown School before it became the Alabama School. And Louise ultimately graduated from Galt High in 1937. Whereas Louise was the first queen of the Galt County Fair and rode her horse in the Galt Parade. And whereas, as a young girl, Louise worked at the Giant Orange Stand next to what is now Kane Garage off Simmerhorn Road. And whereas, as an adult, Louise worked at the early Galt Post Office for many years when it was located on C Street. And whereas Louise was a member of the Daughters of the American Revolution, a charter member of the Galt Area Historical Society, and served as the first Historical Society President, a position she would hold on six separate occasions. And whereas Louise was responsible for naming the Galt Area Historical Society Annual Car Show as a trip down, or a drive down memory lane. And whereas it was Louise who conceived of and started the preservation of old photos of Galt and the surrounding area towns as a means of preserving that pictorial history for posterity. And whereas it was Louise Dowdell who formulated the committees to establish a local museum, which eventually became the Ray House Museum, and spearheaded the coordination of the history of all the local area schools and information about local Native American history. Now therefore be it known that the City of, the City Council of the City of Galt does hereby proclaim August 15th, 2020, as Louise Dowdell Day in and through the entirety of the City of Galt in recognition of the lifelong efforts of Louise Dowdell to discover and preserve the history of Galt. With that, Mr. Mayor, we would ask that the council consider approval of that proclamation.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Hagland, to bring this proclamation in front of the council. I'm happy to support this proclamation because it's a very long, long-term art residence and also helping all the community service a long time. And I will, let's talk about the other council member. Any other council member wants to make a comment? Good, Sean Farmer.
Yeah, I'd just like to make a comment, just like to say, you know, happy birthday. It's quite a feat to, to live, you know, over 100 years. And as some of us, or most of us, I think, are members of the Historical Society, we know, you know, that it's an important organization, Galt. And she's been such an impact to that organization. And she's gonna really leave an important legacy behind with all that she's done. So, happy birthday and look forward to the little parade by where her residence is on the birthday day. More information about that, somebody can contact the Galt Historical Society for more information about that. So, happy birthday, Louise.
Other council member, when it is your hand. Good council member Lamson.
Just want to say happy birthday to Louise. And I hope she will enjoy the little, that's your drive-by parade, and everyone will be out for her. And there, I believe there is information posted on the Historical Society's Facebook page. But what a feat. And congratulations. And she was very active here in Galt and an honor to wish her a happy birthday.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Yeah, happy birthday to Louise. That is, you know, certainly her accomplishments here in the area are well documented and totally appreciate everything she's done and will continue to do. Unfortunately, I won't be able to make the parade, I'll be out of town that day. But I wish her the best and, and I'm sure it'll be quite an event for her.
Thank you. Councilmember Campion?
Yes. The, I've known Louise for a number of years, you know, mainly through the Historical Society. And it amazes me, she is always there, she's always on top of what is going on. And not only has she served as president, but she has served as secretary a number of positions and, and, and a real lightning rod to that organization for the community. And I wish her the best and may more birthdays.
Thank you. Again, happy birthday to Louise in coming days. Thank you. So, Mr. Hagland is, is, I think everybody's supporting, so we don't need to any board or anything, right?
Well, I think that with a, just a quick roll call vote of the council, it becomes an official proclamation and then we can have circulated for council signature.
Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Yes.
Councilmember Farmer?
Yes.
Councilmember Campion?
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson?
Hi.
Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Motion passed with five to zero. Right, next-gen item is public comment.
Under Government Code Section 54954, 54.3, members of the public may address the City Council on non-agenda items. The public comment section is for the City Council to receive comments except for brief responses to questions. No discussion or action may be taken on any item that is not listed on the agenda. Please limit comments to a maximum of five minutes. Due to the statewide emergency and special distancing guidelines, public comments may be submitted via email to pubcom@cityofgalt.org and will be read out loud, subject to the customary five-minute time limitation. Also, members of the public may participate electronically via HTTPS semicolon forward slash forward slash US02web.zoom.us/j/89742253516, webinar ID 89742253516. We do have one public comment written in. This is from Faith and Tom Harper. Attention, Galt City Council. Almost exactly one year ago, state grants providing road diets and roundabouts were offered to the Planning Commission. The public was invited and my husband and I attended along with neighbors and/or other concerned citizens. Based on the presentation regarding future traffic plans for Corillian, we believe the City Council should reject the proposed road diet and roundabouts. The basic plan proposes that 11 roundabouts be built and that the traffic lanes be reduced to one lane in each direction. The primary reasons given were to reduce traffic speed, improve pedestrian and bicycle safety, and to reduce pollution. It appeared that no serious thought was given to introducing stop signs or simply reducing the speed through the use of speed limit signs. It also appears that free money from the state to facilitate the changes was in play. Driving through Galt, it is striking that Corillian is currently one of the best-planned and developed thoroughfares in Galt. The traffic lanes are sufficiently wide to accommodate traffic. There are two lanes in each direction with a center median for most of it. There are bike lanes and developed pedestrian walkways on both sides of the street with mature landscaping. The roadway is separated from houses by sound walls, providing an additional level of safety for children living in the neighborhood. It is easily one of the best streets in Galt and it's hard to understand why it has been chosen for potential redevelopment that will almost certainly make traffic flow worse while providing little or no improvement to pedestrian safety and only a minor improvement to bicycle safety. Could it be that road diets and roundabouts are the new plan de jour? One could almost understand the desire to put in perhaps as many as four roundabouts at key intersections. However, 11 roundabouts in the area in question seems excessive and primarily aimed at making the project more expensive instead of improving safety. It should be noted that since the 2019 planning meeting, the City of Lodi rejected a very similar plan presented by the same company that is proposing the redevelopment of Corillian to the City of Galt. Also during the 2019 meeting, the issue of further development that could feed into Corillian was briefly discussed but not expounded upon. Based on the current development plans, the importance of Corillian as a thoroughfare for potential new development traffic can't be dismissed. And a road diet reducing to one lane in each direction will only hinder the free flow of traffic. After the 2019 meeting, I met with Mr. Farmer and discussed the proposed plan. After talking to him, I proceeded to do some research. Among the other concerns a year ago was the question about the EPA's restrictions for Galt's air quality. This seemed to be the primary motivation for roundabouts as opposed to stop signs, as stopping would be, would use more fuel. This could be a valid concern except for the lack of concern regarding drive-throughs at various fast food locations. As anyone can see by driving around Galt, most of our fast food locations have drive-throughs with long lines of cars, especially during the COVID-19 pandemic. E3sparkplugs.com states that for every two minutes a car idles, it uses the same amount of fuel it takes to go nearly a mile. Based on the number of vehicles involved and the amount of time it takes to go through a drive-through, I would submit that these vehicles create much more pollution than if you stop signs. One of the selling points for this plan is that it won't cost the city anything. This plan may be funded by money set aside by the state, but during this particular time, can that money be taken away to deal with more urgent problems? Also, what is the timeline for completion of these improvements? Will all be conducted all at once over a period of years? Or how? Does the state have a timeline that must be met? The key question regarding any construction is how, is how will current and future traffic be managed during the construction? Part of the plan of the road diet is to divert traffic to other thoroughfares because the existing road diet, the road provides excess capacity. Although it is questionable that Corillian has excess capacity after new construction is factored into the equation, Marengo Road is one of the name roads for traffic to divert to. Unfortunately, Marengo is mostly a two-lane road with some sections of four lanes that has yet to be developed into a four-lane road. How will this impact Liberty High School? Do we really expect Marengo Road to absorb the additional traffic without serious impacts? Is the cost to upgrade Marengo and any other diversionary roads included in the money provided by the state? Or is this a Galt cost Galt will have to pay? Lastly, critics of road diets generally believe they negatively affect the speed and reliability of transit service operating on the roadway. This is especially true if bus stops are or delaying buses attempting to re-enter traffic. Although this may not be a major consideration at this time, it could be important in the future as Galt continues to grow. We believe that alternatives to the road diet, i.e. number of roundabouts, the mixture of stop signs and roundabouts, reduced speed limit, four-lane roundabouts, etc., were not adequately explored or given proper consideration. We also believe that as proposed, the negatives is redeveloping Corillian using the road diet or roundabout plan far exceed any potential positives. Additionally, due to their unpopularity, several citizen groups across the country have formed to reverse the implosion, implementation of road diets in their localities. For these reasons, we urge the City Council to reject the proposed road diet for Corillian. And I do not have any more written public comments at this time.
No, is anybody on a Zoom webinar?
Currently, there's no hands that are raised.
Thank you. Next-gen item is reports by City Council Members on Regional Board, Commission, and Community. Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Yeah, I only have one thing real briefly. We did have a SECOG meeting the other day. I've been appointed to a small group that's gonna look at equity and inclusion as it relates to SECOG and, and traffic planning. One of the main topics was looking at disadvantaged communities and what we can do differently in our planning to, to assist in mobility and things like that. So, that, that's all I have to report on, think, items that have happened. I do have a Policy and Innovation Committee meeting on August 10th and, and then the following week, SECOG meeting that I'll report back out on. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Councilmember Campion?
Yes, back on the 27th of July, we had a meeting with the South Sacramento County Hepatocanceration Committee, at which time we approved some, an agreement, another agreement for preservation of lands. It was a relatively quick meeting, but they are acquiring lands, a fairly significant amount of acreage for mitigation purposes, which should be of benefit to the entire county as, as well as those participating agencies. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Lamson?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We had our Air Quality Control Board meeting and we received a report on the Mayor's Climate Change Commission and how we're working towards the carbon neutrality in 2025. Also, we joined with the Air Pollution Control Board in reaching out to the Speaker of the House Nancy Pelosi and the rest of the House to give some extra COVID funding to the Air Quality Control Board and the Pollutions Boards to help with the income loss due to COVID. And of all the regulations that they want us to implement and oversee, it's becoming impossible without the continued funding. And then the Youth Commission, we had our, our Zoom meeting last night and we had our new officers elected. And I'd like to say congratulations to Ashley Rivas, who is the new chair. And you'll have to tune in for other ones. And I'm gonna work to get something posted out on the website, just trying to figure out how to get pictures of the, of the new officers. Maybe I'll do a little photo shopping so we can post it and congratulate them. So, and then the Youth Commission has a lot of worked on what they're going to want to do for the next year and what we're gonna be able to do due to COVID constrictions. And, but it's a very exciting year and we've got some great kids on there who really want to do some wonderful things to help our community. And we're still looking for three mentors. So, if you would like to come and think you have some good advice and good plans and would be willing to help the youth work towards their goals, we would love to see some more applications. And I believe, Tina, they're on the website, correct? Yes. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next-gen item is Information Consent Calendar.
Mr. Mayor, you skipped me.
Oh, sorry about that, Sean. Sean Farmer?
So, I recently had a Sacramento County Public Library Authority meeting. And it was a good meeting. We fortunately had some damage to one of the libraries in Sacramento, some major damage due to water, which was resolved. But some good, some good news and some data I jotted down to report to everybody. I know there's been a lot of concern with, you know, our kids getting education and, and not being in school and such. So, I would like to proudly announce that in Sacramento County, we've had 271,000 digital checkouts of books in Sack County, which is 163% increase in digital checkouts over normal. And we had 15,000 curbside visits. Specifically in Galt, we had a 217% increase in curbside just in one month from June to July. So, that's 217% just in one month. There was 600 users accessing digital checkouts and over 1,700 checkouts just in our Galt branch. So, pretty, pretty staggering numbers. It's exciting to see that many people still, you know, anxious to get in the library. And I know it's been challenging for the libraries all over, especially our own, to provide services that are really important to a lot of people. So, excuse me. So, we look forward to, you know, hopefully getting back on track someday. But so far, the library's been really good about, you know, improvising and allowing people to still have access to all those things. So, that's what I have on that. Thank you.
Thank you, Sean. I have nothing to report about. I will report the next SD meeting, Transportation meeting. So, next-gen item is Information Consent Calendar. Tina, could you read for me the consent calendar recommendation action, please?
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I actually had two items to pull. And when I asked earlier, you couldn't hear me and you moved on past me.
Oh, okay, which items are?
I just had a quick questions regarding F4 and F5.
Do you have a just question or you want to pull these items?
I, I wanna, I wanna pull both items for just brief questions.
Oh, which one is F?
F4 and F5.
So, Tina, could you read these recommendation action except F4 and F5?
Yes, accept the minutes as submitted. Receive and file warrants for the period ending July 22nd, 2020. Adopt a Resolution 1, authorizing the City Manager to execute a task order with EKI Environment and Water, Inc., for preparation of the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan update in the amount of $50,000. And 2, authorizing an appropriation of $50,000 for the update from Water Fund 05.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move for approval of items 1 through 3.
All right, motion moved by Vice Mayor Lizzano.
I'll second.
Second by Councilmember Lamson. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer?
Hi.
Councilmember Campion?
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson?
Hi.
Mayor Sandu?
Hi.
Motion passed by five to zero. Thank you. The item F4, Agreement with Sacramento County for South County Transit Link Sharing of Responsibility and Cost. Councilmember Farmer?
Yeah, I just had a quick question regarding it. I mean, it's pretty straightforward. I just was curious. Obviously, this arrangement started in 2009 and, and, and then we did a short term approval, this council did, earlier in the year to allow for Sack County to put a new contract together. But basically, just my question was, if someone, maybe, I don't know, Chris, sorry, not Chris, Mike, if Mike, or maybe Tom, if you could comment. Just looking for what is the main difference? Is there any changes in the arrangement that we've had previous to now?
Yeah, sorry, Tom. Yeah, Councilmember Farmer, basically, this is just status quo agreement with the County of Sacramento. We keep the same arrangement as far as paying for 60% essentially of the South County Transit Services and the county pays for the remainder 40%. So.
Okay. I just didn't, it, it had some highlights, but I didn't know if those were just bullet points or if those were actually something that had changed to the previous. So, that, that's the only question I had regarding that item.
Right, yeah, nope. Other than that, that's, yeah, status quo.
Thank you, Mike.
Any council member, any other question on this F4? If he's not, I'm entertaining his motion on F4.
So moved.
Motion moved by Councilmember Farmer. You have a second?
Second.
Second by Councilmember Campion. Tina, may I have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lizzano?
Hi.
Councilmember Farmer?
Hi.
Councilmember Campion?
Hi.
Councilmember Lamson?
Hi.
Mayor Sandu?
Hi. Motion passed with five to zero. The item number F5?
The item number F5, subject of the motion of the front for replacement of four external defibrillator police department from an increased fines and asset season. Councilmember Farmer.
Yeah, and I apologize if I had more time, I could have shot in a quick email to you lieutenant or to the chief about this, but I just simple question. So we're replacing four defibrillators for ones that basically have ran out their shelf life, which may or may not be functional in a time of crisis. So it makes sense that we do that. So my only question was, what do we do with the old ones? I mean, are they just discarded or do we, because I read that we only have four and we keep them in the supervisor's car. So obviously, the other officers don't have them. So is this something where we can, you know, take the older ones and have them available for whatever? Or we donate somewhere? I just wanted to know what happened to the old ones.
So our, actually, when we started this process, our intent was to add additional units. And then we discovered after the budget process that actually those units were beyond their shelf life. And so this is why that agenda item's coming before you tonight. I had the same question asked of me actually by my wife, who works for Sutter, and said, what are you doing with the old ones? We have not done any research about what we can do to surplus those items. I don't feel like it's an appropriate use for a law enforcement facility or for patrol vehicles to have the equipment beyond their shelf life available for deployment. So we need to find out if perhaps the parts or other things can be used for nonprofits or other organizations that could benefit from that. And we continue to work on funding from places like Walmart and others to add to that number of four going forward.
Okay, yeah.
So I don't have a clear, I just don't have a clear answer on disposition of those items yet.
Okay, I agree. I mean, we don't want to, you know, have something that's not going to work. But I do, they're fairly expensive, obviously, by the cost of new ones. So I just hate to see something that's a life-saving device just be discarded. Really, if we could find a use or donate that or some kind of recouping cost would be great if we could look into that.
Yes, and we will do that. We won't simply throw them out. We look at all ways to maximize the use of all our equipment.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Yeah, Lieutenant, I just have a quick comment. I would maybe make a suggestion to reach out to our local fire department to see what context they may have for, you know, ability to refurbish them at some level. Or if we have no idea how we want to effectively dispose of them, they might be a good resource.
Yes, and they've worked with us in ensuring that we get equipment that complements what they're currently using. And so they've been in lockstep with that. So they will be one of our first stops. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other council member, any comment? Do we have a motion to approve F5?
So moved.
Our second.
Motion moved by Councilmember Farmer, second by Councilmember Lanson. Tina, do we have a roll call vote, please?
Vice Mayor Lozano.
Aye.
Councilmember Farmer.
Aye.
Councilmember Campion.
Aye.
Councilmember Lamson.
I'm sorry about that.
Mayor Sandu.
Aye. Motion passed five to zero. Thank you.
Next-gen item is schedule matter notice of public hearing. Number G1, subject Fairway Oaks Island Annexation Project.
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah, sure. Councilmember Lanson, go ahead.
As I'm muting, I need to recuse myself from participating in this item as I own real property, my personal residence, which is within 500 feet of the proposed annexation area and therefore close to Fairway Oaks. Based on this, I have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. While I would typically leave the room for this virtual meeting, I have been advised by the city attorney to leave the room by turning off my mic, camera, and speakers. And Mr. Haglin will notify me when the item is done and I can rejoin the meeting.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I also have a statement.
Yeah, go ahead.
I too also need to recuse myself from participating in this item as I own real property, my personal residence, which is within 500 feet from the proposed Fairway Oaks project and the island annexation. Based on this, I have a conflict of interest and will recuse myself from the discussion of this item. I will be signing out. Because the conflict concerns my personal residence, I may opt to make a public comment as a member of the public, but will do so as a member of the public from the public attendee platform and will log off afterwards. Mr. Haglin, our city manager, will notify me when the item is done and I'll rejoin the meeting for the next item.
Thank you.
Kimberly, do you want me to leave or just turn the volume down and turn it off and then leave the room? If we leave the meeting, can we get back in? We had that problem last time, right?
Sorry, I just tried to unmute there. So you can turn off your mic and video unless you're planning to address as a member of the public, in which case, like Councilmember Farmer, you'd want to completely log off. If you are not going to be doing that, you can shut off your camera, mic, and not participate at all so that everything is shut down.
Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
The council convened a closed session on three items of legal property negotiations during the Republican Party's agenda and it's never been ruled out.
Tom, could we proceed? They already offered.
Kimberly, we couldn't quite hear that. Do you think you could restate that more closer to the microphone?
Sorry, that, I'm having some issues with my technology. Ignore me.
Okay. Mr. Mayor, I think you can proceed with the item.
On this item, I would like to at first give the opportunity to staff, then maybe a 10-minute with the applicant, and then I'm going to open the public hearing. And then I will suggest all the council that we can make a comment. But if any council member have a comment or question during, is free to do.
Thank you and good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Chris Arias, the city's community development director. And I'm pleased to present tonight the Fairway Oaks subdivision and annexation project. With me tonight is the team that worked on it. We've got Michael Fletcher, he's the project applicant representing Arcadia Development. Mike Oliver with Municipal Resource Group, he worked as the project planner for Arcadia. Cindy Ganos with Rainy Planning and Management. She's the city's contract planner, providing planning services for the project. And last but not least is Bill Forrest, the city senior development services engineer. Cindy Ganos will provide the project presentation after she's finished. The team will be available to answer any questions you might have. However, before she starts, I just wanted to provide a little background on the project. As the project implies, or the title implies, there are two components to the project. There's the development project site and the annex area. And that's represented on the map that you see on the screen. I think you'll see this also in Cindy's presentation. We kind of give you that just to give you a flavor of kind of how they work together. So there's a long history of both the annexation and a project site. And there's a long history because this area has been in this growth pattern, certainly since the early 90s and probably even before then. And as early as 1992, there was a development that was brought forward. It included 124-lot subdivision and the annexation of the county island. The project didn't go forward because the county island residents voted not to annex into the city and then the subdivision map expired. This project was restarted again in mid-2000 with an environmental document being completed in 2008. However, that wasn't brought forward for consideration. I do, I believe mostly because of the housing market crash at that time. But we had a project in 2012 that included 100-lot subdivision without annexation. And this project obtained unanimous approval from both the planning commission and city council. And this was despite fierce opposition from people living in the county island. This project in 2012 was successful because it included planning commission recommendations of four access points into the subdivision. That is from Chase Drive, Ranch Road, Cornell Road, and Glendale Drive. The planning commission rightly believed that the four access points evenly distributed the trip generation of the project and didn't burden any single access point through the subdivision. And I would say that if you look at from an aerial view, the subdivisions that are adjacent to it, those roads were planned for eventual connection. Well, all of them except the Glendale connection. So the project applicant successfully extended the map for three years while they marketed the site to home builders. They finally exhausted all extensions. A number of home builders were interested in the site, but they weren't able to move forward, what we discovered for two primary reasons. One is they didn't have the yield of homes to cover the costs associated with development. So based on the extensive biology mitigation and other development costs, there were too few homes in the subdivision really to make it worthwhile for the home builders. And then the other item that really contributed to the project not working for the home builders is that the right-of-way along Cornell was uncertain since it was under county control and not under city control. So based on what we learned from that effort in 2012 and the following years, the city partnered with Arcadia to develop the site because it is important to the city. The city owns a 5.6-acre site that was adjacent to Fairway Oaks. And it's the only part of Fairway Oaks, the project that you see today, that is actually connected to the county island. So if you look at the red spot on the map on the screen, it's kind of in the upper left-hand corner of it. It's a little bit odd-shaped. But the city decided to sell this property because we didn't need it and it really made the project work. And the current city council approved the sale of this property in early 2019. So we believe that we have a partnership moving forward with this development proposal. And the additional property of the city contribution, which will be a sale, makes the project work and gives the developer and potential home builders the yield that they need. So we believe with that, we settled or answered one of the issues that the home builders were facing. So the other issue is then Cornell Road. So in order to help facilitate access on Cornell Road, or I should say improvements, because even without the county island being annexed, we could still build at the end of Cornell Road and still have access. But we would like to see improvements on Cornell Road. So in order to get those improvements, it's better if the city has control of the county island to ensure that that can happen. So that's why we decided to annex. And the best part about the annex as part of this project is the city gets a benefit. The developer pays for it essentially. So this is really a benefit to the city. Can you do next slide, please? So as I mentioned, the annexation is required to ensure site access along Cornell. And in addition to ensuring that access, the annexation provides for more efficient government services and provides the city with control over the land, which is really inside the city boundaries. A recent example of the need to have this land used under control of the city council is that the county recently approved the cell tower in the island annex area. And Galt citizens complained to the city council only to learn that the council had no authority over the county land. So providing council control over this land provides benefits to the developer for sure, for Cornell Road, but it also benefits the city and other city residents that are near the county island. I would like to add finally that the project is consistent with the general plan. The general plan map is shown on the right. It shows the city's growth area. And I show a city zoning map, which shows the existing boundary on the left-hand side. And you can see our city's kind of misshapen. And there's a couple annexations coming up that are important for the city that I think will help shape our boundaries to make them more logical and connect the two halves of the city and then also get rid of holes in the city. So these are important. And this general plan was approved by council in 2009. And the approval was based on over 50 public meetings and support from the state, the county, CACOG, LAFCO, environmental groups, and other local agencies. So Anxy Island fills a hole in the city and is an important step in fulfilling this general plan. And we as planners take this general plan seriously. And if you look behind me, you'll see these maps that we look to and refer to on a day-to-day basis. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Cindy Ganos. She will go over the project in more detail. And hopefully, I did not steal too much of her thunder on some of the project details. So at this point, I'll turn it over to Cindy. And if the city clerk can pull up the next presentation.
Next slide, please. Mayor and council members, the Fairway Oaks and Island Annexation Project is located south of Glendale Avenue, west of 99, northwest of Dry Creek, and north and east of existing Creekside subdivision. The necessary entitlements include annexation, a pre-zoning and rezoning, and a vested tentative subdivision map. Chris went over a lot of stuff, so I'm going to try not to repeat it as I move forward in my presentation. Next slide. As noted in the staff report, LAFCO law now encourages annexation of unincorporated islands that meet a list of requirements, and those are detailed in the staff report. This annexation satisfies all of those requirements. The island includes 39 and a half acres to be annexed to the city. Annexation requires LAFCO approval as well as for annexation to the city as well as for detachment from the Slough House Resource Conservation District. The annexation would facilitate city and water being made available, sewer and water being made available to the island properties, but would not mandate they connect until the property is requested to be developed further. Existing uses that are currently allowed by the county will be allowed to